Good evening. Please take your seats. Allow me to call to order the Ferndale City Council meeting of Monday, June the fourteenth, 2010. It is 7:31 PM. Madam Clerk, first item?
Shall we have the Pledge of Honor?
Yes, ma'am. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregarded, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today is Flag Day, so that was an appropriate thing for us to do. Madam Clerk, next item?
Roll call. Councilmembers Baker, Galloway, Lennon, Piana, and Mayor Cuffin.
Here as well, all accounted for. Madam Clerk, next item is approval of the agenda.
It is indeed.
Any changes or requests as far as the agenda is concerned? Or a motion and second to adopt?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Lennon, Baker, discussion, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Cuffin?
Yes, as well. Next item?
We have a presentation by Ferndale Public Schools.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Stolger, Communication Specialist for Ferndale Public Schools, and I have a lot of fantastic news to share tonight. I'd like to start with first, our Ferndale High School men's track team finished fourth in the state in their division. The best they've done since about 1987 or so. Really fantastic year. A lot of kids finished with All-State status, nine actually, finished with All-State status. And one of the girls relay team also made it to All-State. So we are very proud of those kids. They worked very hard this season with their new coach. Second great piece of news, one of our middle school teachers, Rick Pjornak, received Teacher of the Year from the radio station, Magic 105.1. One of his students submitted an application on his behalf, and he beat out all the other applicants and won $2,500 for his classroom. So that was wonderful. Also, Roosevelt Primary won $20,000 in school supplies from Operation Kid Equip this month. They had a kind of competition between local schools and whoever had the most teachers come and support the event, the comedy event, won all that money for school supplies. So next year, Roosevelt's so excited, they're going to be able to buy all kinds of things for their students. Also, this past weekend, Relay for Life was held at Ferndale High School. And out of the 2016s, nine of them were district teams, and it's the best turnout we've had so far for the relay and for the district support. Overall, over 400 people participated, and the last number I heard today was $57,000.
Wow. Congratulations. That's for breast cancer?
It's for American Cancer Society.
American Cancer Society. Let's give the folks at schools around at the Relay for Life.
We've also had all three of our graduations, and we have over 550 graduates this year. All success stories from all around. We have a lot of kids heading to top universities, U of M, Michigan State, Case Western, Loyola, et cetera. The graduation ceremonies were all wonderful and exciting, and despite the weather, you know, it was just wonderful events all around. Ferndale High School's 220 graduate had about $1.3 million in scholarships and grants that they received. And University High School's 67 graduates had over $350,000 in scholarships. So our kids are doing really great, getting what they need for college. Something important that we want to make sure the whole community knows about is we're starting a new program this summer. It's Free Summer Meals Program, and any child who lives anywhere, doesn't even have to be in our community, can come and receive free breakfast and free lunch from the district all summer. Breakfast is from 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, Monday through Friday. Lunch is 11:00 AM to 12:00 noon, Monday through Friday. Pizza's always on Friday. And the locations that families can go to are Roosevelt Primary, University High School, Ferndale Middle School/High School, Coolidge Intermediate School, and Grant Early Childhood Center. So any of those locations, any day of the week, you don't have to show ID, there's no financial requirements. It's an opportunity for people, kids in our community, to make sure that they are eating well during the summer. Again, Free Summer Meals Program for any child 18 and under in our community. You can go to any site you want. If anyone has any questions, they can call our Food Service Director, Jason Russell, at (248) 586-8703. So we are winding up our school year. Friday is the last day. But we have a lot of fantastic news at the end of the year. And if anyone would like more information or would like to sign up for our newsletters, which look like this, they can go to our website, ferndaleschools.org, click on District News, or email us at fpsfanout@ferndaleschools.org.
Thank you. Well done. Madam Clerk, next item?
We have our public hearing on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Yes, we do. And I see Julie Hall coming forward, the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Mayor, Council. This is the culmination of our year-long planning process for our Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. The Michigan Department of Natural Resources and Environment requires that every five years we do an update to qualify for state and some federal grants. And we went through an extensive process, as you see in the memo I submitted. I'm more than willing to go through that memo if you'd like in detail. But this is a requirement through Michigan Department of Natural Resources and Environment, and it's been a year in the making.
Well, it's an excellent, excellent document. Does the council members, would they like her to go through a detailed description of the entire multi-page plan? Or are there any highlights that anyone would like to point out?
I think it's a wonderful piece of work. It really do.
Anything particularly exciting or interesting you want to share?
Well, I think one highlight, and especially when we talk about walkability and just access to parks, over 91% of our residents live within a half-mile access to a city park. So I do think that that is worth noting as far as walkability and availability of the parks. Accessibility is our number-one priority through the plan. Obviously, everyone who contributed and participated in the planning process understands there are fiscal constraints to major development within the parks, and the primary focus was maintaining what we have. And this plan, however, positions us that should funds become available through grants or other public-private opportunities, that we have a plan in place to move forward and be ready to work within what residents want.
Excellent. Let's, yes, ma'am.
I wanted to say kudos with the master plan. I thank you for allowing me to have a personal session and give my feedback. I did want to mention two things. One, the trash pickup and general cleanliness and keep bathrooms open and clean were two of the top priority items that came out of the surveys, and I think we addressed one of them through our budgeting process with the trash pickup and general cleanliness and redirecting some dollars to help cover some of those duties. The one thing that I have heard from many residents is our new play equipment, and I know there's not a lot of funding at this time to purchase those items, and I would encourage you to go after more grants. And you and I have talked about a program called, I think it's Kaboom?
Yes, Kaboom.
Kaboom, and some other places that we can try to get new play equipment because we are really outdated in some areas. And then the final thing is the citywide non-motorized connectivity study in your plan, and I fully support that. And it is in line with some, the complete streets ordinance that I will bring to council to consider in end of July or beginning of August. And it goes, that ordinance would require the city to create a non-motorized plan. So bringing together our pieces together to see how we're going to plan for all users going forward. So I think you guys have done a great job, and ties in with the vision in the master plan and things like that. So, kudos. Thank you.
All right. Well, let's open up the public hearing then, which is a requirement. The time and place was noticed. This is the public hearing, open now for anyone in the audience to discuss or make any comments with regards to the Ferndale Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Anyone like to comment? All right. I'm not seeing any comments. Anything else from council?
Oh, I just had a question for Julie. Julie, a lot of folks in northwest Ferndale have been concerned about how we would go about using that vacant land or the land that the city owns on Oak Ridge. I see that that's included in the master plan, I think for the first time. Could you go into a little detail about what the master plan says about that and what you did in regards to that?
As far as that north parcel, I think that's where we are looking at some of the, you know, our focus is right now are the accessibility. Trails came up high as well. Playgrounds and playground maintenance. We have not specified a specific development for that park at this point. We have been approached by, about different public-private, whether it be disc golf or some other things, but there's been no specific determination for that park area at this point. We do have a couple of different members of the community. Melanie had mentioned the playgrounds, and we will be meeting after the plan is approved to start with some of our neighborhood groups. And we do have one mom in particular who would like to head up a committee to research that. That particular parcel, we have not designated a specific project at this point, but it is on our list to consider for...
Okay. And you're probably aware, but, you know, we are considering selling off some of those parcels, and so, you know, any thoughts that you have about that park, I think we would love to hear before we make any final decision on that.
Definitely.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? If not, then we will close the public hearing. Any further final comments from the council or a motion with regards to our next move?
I would move to recommend approval of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update as recommended by Recreation Director Hall and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Support.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded, Baker and Piana. Discussion? I just want to commend you, Julie, and also the volunteers of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
We do have three of them here today, Virginia Saxton, Jeannie Davis, and Brian Cooley, who were extensively involved in the process and numerous meetings, so I appreciate their time.
Well, let's have them stand, and let's give them a round of applause. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Cuffin.
Yes, passed unanimously. Thank you again. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Now, we have a public hearing on the special land use request from Valentine Vodka, 161 Vester.
Yes, we do. Mr. Brunner, will you introduce this?
No, Ms. Shear is approaching, and I'll let her handle it.
Ms. Shear, Director of CDS Department, approaching the bench.
Good evening. Mr. Rafino Valentine of Valentine Vodka, which I'm sure council is all very aware, has applied for special land use, approval for a distillery and tasting room at the property at 161 Vester. The property is located in the MXD-1 zoning district, which allows production facilities along with retail outlets. The MXD district is also intended to encourage a complementary mixture of small-scale uses, including residential, local business, and office uses that are compatible in a neighborhood setting. At its May 13th meeting, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and did recommend that council approve this petition. The city attorney's concerns and suggestions concerning licensing have been added to council's copy of the resolution.
Very good.
And we do have the applicant and his landlord here with us this evening.
Okay. Before we go to the public hearing, any questions or requests for information from the council members?
If you'd like a larger-scale plan, I have some available.
My only request for information, I'm sorry, what are the pieces that were added after the Planning Commission?
Just number 13, where it requires compliance with federal and state liquor laws.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shear. Then let's open the public hearing again. This is the time and date set for a public hearing with regard to the special land use for Valentine Vodka, 161 Vester. For those unfamiliar with the address, that is a little store that used to sell pool tables, I believe, near the American Legion. Anyone wish to comment on this? Okay, I'm not seeing any. And Marsha, you said some of the council was probably familiar with it. I've never tasted it. I don't suppose they, anyone brought taste either. Then we will close the public hearing and go back to City Council and find out if folks have any questions, comments, thoughts, or a motion.
I had to read it last time, and I'll read it again if you want me to. It's long because it's a special land use.
You have to read the whole thing?
Yeah. I move to support the following resolution being adopted, the special land use application for Mr. Rafino Valentine of Valentine Vodka on 161 Vester under ordinance number 1087. And I do need to read the whole thing?
No, you don't.
Okay. I thought you needed to read the restrictions in the special land use.
You don't have to read it on the record. It is, as long as you make reference to the copy that's included in your pack.
It's just fun for the Planning Commission, then.
Okay. If you really want to, you could read the whole thing, Councilwoman.
I would support Councilman Piana's motion.
All right. The motion is made and seconded. It's not required that the landlord or the Mr. Rafino come speak, but if you'd like to say anything, you certainly may, but it sounds like an interesting place. And for those who like to buy local or who like to keep things Michigan, you can't get much closer because, Mr. Rafino, you'll be making it right over there? Right over there?
There.
Right over there.
I...
My sense of direction is better, or not as good as mine. All right. No other, yes, ma'am?
I wonder if it would be appropriate if Mr. Valentine would just give a brief description because it was so interesting about your business model and your work with Michigan State University, and just a little bit about exactly what you'll be doing on that site. It's actually very interesting.
Well, I'm Rafino Valentine, President and Founder of Valentine Vodka. What we're doing currently right now is we're making a world-class vodka 100% in Michigan. What we want to do with this project is move the facility to Ferndale, where we will produce the vodka, as well as have, offer tours, as well as a tasting room.
Very cool. And I did taste it. I forgot. I don't want to lie to the people.
Tasted it once at Como's.
That's right.
Thank you kindly.
Any other questions? What's your timeline as far as the, you've already built out, Mr. Pearlman is the landlord, I believe, the owner of the building, is work being done?
Well, we started with just the facade and stuff like that, but we're hoping to be licensed by the state and the federal authorities by October.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rafino. If there's no other questions, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Cuffin.
Yes, that passes unanimously. A last item on the public hearing list.
Is a request, it's a liquor license request for new outdoor service one area to be held in conjunction with the Emory's liquor license, and this would accommodate their sidewalk cafe.
It's about the sidewalk cafe, correct?
Correct.
All right. Then no further introduction need be. We will open the public hearing on that issue, again, which has to do with the Emory and its creation of an outdoor cafe area. I think behind the Emory, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. Johnston is here. In front.
In front, along the sidewalk in front.
Comments from the public on this issue? Not seeing any. Mr. Johnston, you want to say anything, or are you good?
I'm good.
All right. Then if, any questions or comments from the council or a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion, as now I can sit outside at one of my favorite restaurants. I would recommend to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approval of the request from 27700 Inc. for a new outdoor service one area to be held in conjunction with a 2010 Class C licensed business with dance entertainment permit located at 22700 Woodward, Ferndale, Michigan, 48220 Oakland County.
I think Councilman Lennon got the second there, so motion made by Baker, seconded by Lennon. Questions, comments? I'll just share that Emory is one of my favorite brunch places, so that could be nice to have brunch, in my case, early afternoon, some Sunday. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Cuffin.
Yes, passes. Mr. Johnston, go open your sidewalk cafe. Pub crawls July 25th. See if you can get it open by then, all right? All right, we are now, if I may, to the call to audience. I brought my stopwatch this time. We have a long agenda, but we will always reserve 30 minutes at the top of a meeting for folks to talk on any issue that is not on the agenda. So if you're interested in some of the items that are coming up on the agenda, you'll have to chill, but those else in the audience who'd like to speak, you have three minutes total or less. Please share your name and address verbally or in the back written, and please be courteous, and we respect the integrity of all individuals. Mr. Dan Martin?
Yep, my name is Dan Martin at 1447 West Hazelhurst. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Ferndale Community Foundation, once again promoting our next fundraiser. We are currently seeking designs for a community flag that is to be created and used to represent the city of Ferndale, its homes, businesses, that's really going to just demonstrate pride in the community. We are asking local artists, graphic designers, students, and anybody else who has a creative bone in their body that wants to design a symbol or a flag that kind of represents our unique, beautiful, and meaningful community. What will happen then is, from a panel, we'll select the five that are our favorites, and then we'll put it out on our website for folks to vote. And we'll wrap all this up by the end of July. The deadline for the submissions of the designs is July 15th. We'd like you to submit them electronically, either as JPEGs or TIFF formats, and you can get the details on our website at www.ferndalecommunityfoundation.org. And then, once we've, get our five finalists, the community can vote on it, and we will sell them throughout the year to raise money for the foundation. And just so you know, as I'm sure you all know, the foundation raises money to give during our annual grant cycle to area nonprofits for projects within the city of Ferndale that kind of enhance our culture and the way of life here. If there's any questions, you can go to the website, or you can give me a call at (248) 672-4067.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of Ferndale Library. I guess I digress. My name is Matt Nowatzik, 226 East Oak Ridge. I'm here to announce that we are having a sneak peek occupancy permit pending on Saturday, June 26th, to showcase our new library, which is located on 22, 2 East Nine Mile Road. We're going to have tours, live music, showing orders, and cash bar, assuming the occupancy permit goes through. Friends members and chew ticks are around $40. There is a slew of various options from a pricing perspective, so I encourage anyone to go to our website, www.ferndalefriends.org. And that would be all. Thank you.
What time, Mr. Nowatzik?
Oh, thank you. It'd be from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
On Saturday, the 26th of June?
Oh, you're much better at this than I am, yes, on Saturday, June 26th.
Before you step down, Mr. Nowatzik, the previous gentleman mentioned the Ferndale Flag Competition and Fundraiser.
Yes.
I understand that was your idea.
That would have been my idea. I lived in a community in Atlanta, Georgia, before I moved back up called Inman Park, and we did a similar thing, and it was pretty awe-inspiring. When you'd come into our neighborhood, you definitely knew you were in Inman Park by the amount of monarch butterflies. And it was a really, really cool thing that was a sign of our pride in our neighborhoods, and hopefully we can replicate it here and, you know, give money to some nonprofits and at the same time, you know, show our pride.
So you're on the board of Ferndale Community Foundation, as well as Friends of the Library?
Yes, sir. I just got elected to the Treasury, so...
Well done.
Well, thank you.
U of M fan.
Hi, I'm Sharon Chess with DDA. I live at 1119 Earl Boulevard, and I want to bring everybody's attention to this week's third Thursday. It's kid and family-friendly, and we invite all families to come down. Oakland County Parks and Recs will be bringing down a puppet show. I'll be bowling for fish, so we'll do the Orange Bowl. Rosie's O'Grady's will do kids karaoke again, and different things will be occurring. There'll be different promotions at various stores and businesses downtown, so please come to the third Thursday, this coming Thursday. And my next comment, as a resident, is I want to say kudos to those who organized the Dyke March. I was having concerns about that because I live directly across the street from where that event was going to be held, in Gary Park, and it was done with such respect, with such organization, such care. We enjoyed listening to the live music during that day. I talked to the other residents in my neighborhood, and we were very pleased with how that event, and we welcome them anytime, back to Gary Park.
Did you see the flag that Mr. Smirtka put up?
It was just a wonderful, wonderful, it was very well-received.
It was the largest rainbow flag I've ever seen in my life.
I've ever seen on that.
It's like 30 feet long or something.
It took up the whole side of his household, and he lives right along, he lives at the corner of Woodington and Pinecrest, and I thought, great, okay, so thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Chess.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and appointees. My name is Joe Swears, 1117 Emwell. On April 12th, I was here regarding entitlements that were taken away from retirees from the Police and Fire Department. Mr. Mayor, I spoke directly to you, and I had two questions. First one being a list stating specifically what benefits were taken away from the retirees. Secondly, documentation showing the healthcare coverage audit, which discovered this alleged mistake. You directed Mr. Brunner to answer these two questions in writing in 30 days.
Yes, sir.
At the three-week point, I gave him a courtesy call, and he said, Joe, we're really busy, you know, we got other things going. I said, I understand, I'll wait. It's now in 60 days. Quite frankly, Mr. Mayor, I would have thought that if you felt you had the right to take away benefits, you would have the justification at hand. And my question is, are you going to answer these questions?
It's a good question. Mr. Brunner is not present. Well, that was good timing, wasn't it? Mr. Swears, I don't know what to tell you, other than it's, this is the first time that I've been made aware that you did not get the answers that you need.
And I'm trying to be as polite as possible.
And you always are.
But I think 60 days is, I think we're at the limit, what's acceptable.
You're a perfect gentleman. Now, we on the council did get a series of documents. It may or may not be what you were seeking, and I don't know if any council members...
It was not.
It was not adequate or not fully explanatory?
It's maybe at all.
That described sort of the process of how and when that decision, those decisions were made. And I can only tell you that it is a staff situation that I am unable tonight to tell you, give you the answers that you want. As you know, we on the council are not full-time employees here at the city that are able to get that together, but I can ask Mr. Brunner, as soon as we see him again, to get this to you immediately.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would hate to have to go over the point of submitting a FOIA request. That would be ludicrous, since you saw us fit to take away the benefits.
You certainly have a right to do that.
I understand, sir, but I would rather do it gentlemanly.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I proceed?
You may, although remember that the issues tonight that are coming on the agenda would not be discussed now, so if you're interested in talking about, for example, item, item 8A, the discussion of medical marijuana, you might want to, you need to hold off till we get to that topic.
I don't think that that applies. My name is Carl Wyler. My address is 1955 Martin Road. I'm here this evening to, I'm sorry, Mayor, Council. I'm here this evening to state my personal position on marijuana, which echoes the mayor's view as reported in the Woodward Talk, June 9th edition, which is a CNG newspaper. There are people with a political agenda spreading disinformation about Michigan marijuana law. Do not be fooled by the misinformation spread by the fundamentalist religious groups and others. The article mentions a $1.8 million business model for a provider who has a maximum of five clients and 12 plants per client under law. Suppose someone spent $1,000 a week for 50 weeks, or $50,000. Times five is under $300,000. There are not many families in Ferndale who could afford to spend so much. Even so, this would be only 18% of the ridiculous $1.8 million. Why didn't they go for the big lie, a billion dollars? I don't understand why anyone would want to take away the right to obtain medicine, to, I don't understand why anyone would want to take away the right to obtain medicine from those few who need and qualify for it, why deny a sick person medicine stopping pain? Be aware that deceit will not likely prevail in the courts, federal policy does not prosecute medical marijuana users. If you pass an ordinance based on deceit and lies, you will probably be overruled, should you try to deny citizens their right under law. I support the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, voted into law by sixty-five percent of the Michigan citizens, majority of citizens in all eighty-two Michigan counties voted in favor of providing palliative medicine for people who are ill, and sadly, in many cases, dying.
Uh, evening, my name is George Gomez, I'm with, uh, I'm at twenty eighteen Guthrie in Royal Oak, and what I'm here to do, unfortunately, is to share with you a story about stopping in to Ferndale, uh, at a restaurant recently, I'm at the south end of Royal Oak, so I come into Ferndale often for dinner, and I got myself caught in between a parking war, uh, battle up on Woodward Avenue by Anita's, and why I'm here to see you is not so much to remedy this civil case where my car got towed out of a lot next door to Anita's, but so much to say to you that if a, a parking lot owner's intended not to have any use there when it's, uh, the businesses are closed, or what have you, as it is tonight, right now, the same lot, just at the south end of that block, is full, and I'm sure the people pulling in there once the bank is closed, and State Farm is closed, and redesign for customers, probably believe that they're allowed to do so without any hindrance, well, on Memorial Weekend, I did the same thing, and unfortunately got towed away, only after being there for about two hours. So my concern for you is that if someone really intends like they do in Royal Oak, we chain the lots, you know, we would make it clear to people, we don't set them up for failure like this, we don't set them up for disappointment, and after six of us ate a fine dinner at Anita's and enjoyed ourselves, we came out finding a car being gone, only to find out that the owner of Anita's, and somehow this owner of the lot, are in some dispute, I'm hoping some level heads here in the City Council might be able to speak to these folks, and let them know that this really does hurt Ferndale, it's really not the intention, I'm sure of yourselves, to have people like myself stop in, not be aware of these things, and to be taken advantage of, but it took me three days to get my car back, because on Memorial Weekend, the towing company they chose to use decided not to have people to take your money, but just to take your car, so that would be a civil matter I have with them, but I do wanna share with you that this really undermines what all the efforts you're doing, and all the things you're celebrating here tonight, so thank you.
Do you share which lot you were in?
Uh, it's the one right for the PSB is the bank and the State Farm, so it's like two doors down from the, uh, Anita's, and unfortunately, I'll share with you, the State Farm agent is my agent, and the only way I have a way to express to them that I'm just satisfied with this, I don't need to be part of this game plane, I'm pulling all my business out of the State Farm office, I'm sorry to do that to them, but I have no other way to express to the landowner that this is not something that's, should be taken lightly, and the sad part is, I don't know what he's upset about, it's the bank's responsibility to maintain the lot, and to pave it, so I don't understand where his concern would be, if it's not the bank's concern, or the State Farm agent's concern, that people are using the lot once they're closed, I more than respect them during their, you know, hours of operation, as we operate a business in Royal Oak as well, but, you know, we're, we understand that during business hours, you want people to move in and out for your customers, but when you're closed, it's eight o'clock at night, please, respect others and enjoy the fact that they're busy like you would be busy, so thank you.
If I remember correctly, Mayor, when, when Anita's applied for all their permits to open up, wasn't there some sort of agreement in place that they could use that lot, I, I think for parking at night, it's been a couple of years, but I think there, there was.
It's a good question.
I think there was.
I thought those buildings were owned by a separate landlord, and, and not owned by State Farm or the bank, but.
I, I could probably help to answer, maybe some of that, um, we do know the owner, we have a decent, the DDA does have a, a good relationship with the owner, and obviously all the tenants that are there, um, my recollection is, yes, that they did come before either, uh, a board of zoning appeals process, um, planning process, and then back to Council in the end for using that lot, um, for their service, so, I think we can do our part to try to get the parties to talk, unfortunately, I think it seems to be a tenant landlord issue as well, um, so unfortunate case, that, um, sometimes that does happen, and we can't get into the legal matters between, uh, a tenant and landlord, but I think we can, um, clarify to them the issue that it might be having in terms of impact on our community.
Thank you for that, Christine, could you email me tomorrow and give me a couple of the details, thanks, I'll try to help too. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Jeannie Davis, fifteen thirty-one Pinecrest, and I'm here tonight as a friend of the library, as Matt says, we have our sneak preview on June twenty-sixth, on July tenth is the grand opening, and for the first time in the library, we're gonna have a used bookstore, where people can come in and buy used books, paperbacks, and hardcovers at ridiculously low prices, and this will raise funds for the Friends of the Library to buy gifts for the library, we're currently collecting books for this, so if anybody has a stash of used books in their basement or attic, if they're in fairly decent condition, we would appreciate it, and, and I do have room to store them in my basement until the opening, but we would really like to have some books on the shelves for that opening, so, um, if, if you will, you can call me at two four eight five four one five eight eight eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
One question?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you collecting music, CDs, or just books?
Yeah, we'll take CDs, DVDs, thank you, thank you, I wouldn't have thought of that, but you know, when we've had the book sales, we, we have had them, what we're planning on is two book sales a year, but through the year, we'll be selling out of the, um, out of this little room, we have our own little room, it's, it's cool, and we're gonna have a couple of carts, right where you come in, too, where you can buy, we've, um, researched with the other libraries in the area and found out how they handled things, and, uh, sort of tick, trip, you know, tips of the trade, so to speak, but thanks for asking that, Melanie, we will take, and you know, we'll take sheet music, too, and, and those old knitting books, or those craft books that you're tired of, you know, that's somebody else's fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Patrick Sheehan, Ferndale Firefighters Association, President, how you guys doing tonight? Uh, just wanted to come up here tonight and ask you a few questions regarding, uh, as you, as you're aware, the union was pretty much involved in all of the special budget meetings, and, uh, we participated, and we had almost as good of a record in attendance as, as everybody, and, um, during all those meetings, there was a lot of hard work, and there was a lot of good decisions, and hard decisions that were made, and, uh, along the way, there was comments all along that, uh, you know, we, the VSIPs, the early retirement incentives that were, were out there, were gonna help and aid in, in, uh, reducing layoff numbers, and we heard that over and over, and, um, uh, we believed in it, and, uh, during all the, uh, special budget meetings, uh, at some point, Mr. Galloway, uh, made a, a motion to, uh, suspend three of the, uh, original proposed layoffs, and we appreciate it, uh, every bit, every bit counts for us over there, and, uh, it makes a difference. When the dust settled, we came down to the fire department was gonna lose four guys, four, four positions, and, um, and since then, we had a, uh, one gentleman, uh, uh, with, with a lot of work with Mr. Brunner, uh, we were able to, uh, uh, one other guy wanted to take the VSIP offer, and he did, and that was after the, the four men that were proposed, and I guess I just wanna, uh, make sure that you guys are, you know, I believe you are aware of it, and I just wanted to give some reassurance that, uh, that was going to, uh, count as one of the bodies, 'cause like I said, it, I don't mean to be a stickler, but we're, we're fighting for our lives over there, and, uh, we just need, we need to get some answers, I believe it'll help in a lot of, instilling some more good faith for negotiations.
Mr. Brunner, any thought on that, or?
Well, my thought is, I don't wanna discuss it here, we can discuss it when we meet with the mediator on June twenty-fourth.
Okay, is there any comments from Mayor and Council on that, I mean, you guys do remember making those comments along the way, do you not? Okay, talk soon.
Yeah, we're hopeful that a lot of the, uh, layoffs could be rescinded, we're very hopeful for that, and we're, we're still in negotiations, which means the Council members must be very, uh, cognizant of not making public statements, uh, because there still is negotiation going on.
But that was a statement that was made, correct?
Well, and I, I don't wanna comment on the negotiations, we have a meeting coming up, but my understanding of the budget process was that we were eliminating positions, not necessarily speaking to how, you know, we get there, so, um, I'm sure it'll be further clarified in mediation, but that was my understanding.
All right, well, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We have about three minutes left during this section, so you're, you're good.
Good evening, uh, I'm Stella Dichenka, two sixty-eight Pearson Ferndale, uh, I live in Ferndale, I work in Ferndale, I have child who goes to Rosel Public School, and I expect, and we were talking about Michigan Smoke Fair Law, and I'd like to make like proposal, because I had issue with one of parents on a playground in the Gary Park, I'm about, like summer's coming, kids are going to play in the parks more, and we're talking about, not a whole park area, I respect people with their habits, but I'm talking about playground, and on the playground, we have signed, no kids over twelve, no dogs allowed, and particular, could we add non-smoking, because this gentleman, obviously Oak Park or Detroit, he was sitting one yard on a base of monkey bars from my child, and smoking right into her face, and I told him, sir, could you just go and take seat, we have enough in the Gary Park place where he can sit and it can be spread it, you know, it's one of these bad, but he's sitting, and I said, he started battling me, and I told him, you know what, you want to own your kids' health, it's your child, it's your problem, but other kids come over, and we are not smoking, we don't smoke in home, I was a heavy smoker for a long time, but we quit, and I don't want you to quit, but just step few yards out of playground, if we just can put little signs, especially now, summer starts, we'll have a lot of children, a lot of teenager, a lot of people coming from all the way around neighborhood, and if we could, this will be easy for them, just I can, somebody can point and say, look, playground, not a park, I'm telling the game about, and, uh, plus, I just heard about police issue, and me and my husband, we're very proud of our Ferndale police, they're doing great job, and especially, it's, will be wiser to keep them at least in the summertime, when we have a lot of teenager, and a lot of people coming to participate, we have lots of nice restaurants, nice, um, you know, downtown activities, we will need force to keep people safe, our safe, our businesses safe, and people who come to visit us safe. If we could, you know, find the way to maybe raise money, it's, it's, because Ferndale is a sensitive area, even Birmingham, Birmingham don't have such a great rate for keep us safe, you know, I just.
All right.
There's no issue I want to.
Appreciate it very much, um, I would ask Dan Chris to put this on the agenda for the ordinance committee to see if there's any state issues, or, or whether.
Because they say like childcare centers, health facilities, and outdoors, even people in the bars, they can request certain, you know, distance from the bar, why would just consent?
I hear you, I hear you, and our, uh, Recreation Director is here as well, so we can investigate whether or not, uh, a smoking ban around playgrounds is an option, okay? Thank you. We are now at the end of the section that allows public speaking, uh, we can come back to that if folks wish to at the end of the meeting for more public speaking, otherwise, Madam Clerk, next item.
Okay, we're onto the consent agenda.
It's a long one.
Your Honor, bear with me, item A, approval of the minutes of the May twenty-fourth meeting, B, approval of, to adopt a resolution designating April thirtieth, twenty-ten as Arbor Day in the city of Ferndale, C, approval to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the DPW Director to request reimbursement of eligible mosquito control activity under Oakland County's West Nile Virus Fund Program, item D, approval to adopt a resolution supporting public transportation, E, approval to adopt a resolution supporting the Regional Entrepreneurial Collaborative, item F, approval to adopt a resolution recognizing El Shidai Christian Community Development Corporation as a nonprofit organization operating in the city of Ferndale, item G, approval to reappoint DPW Director Byron Fatides as representative, and City Manager Robert J. Brunner, Jr. as alternate to represent the city of Ferndale on the Board of Trustees of the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty-ten, item H, approval of the fee schedule for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty-eleven, item I, approval of the accounts to be charged as a lien against the respective properties, and to be collected as special assessments on the July first, twenty-ten tax bill, item J, approval of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Contract Amendment Number Three with Home Renewal Systems LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement, item K, approval of the sale of property located at twenty-twelve Morehouse to Joseph and Rosemary Hornak for five thousand dollars, and the sale of eight oh-three East Breckenridge for sixty-five hundred, and to direct the city attorney to prepare property transfer closing documents, item L, approval of the special event permits for the Funky Ferndale Art Fair and the DIY Street Fair, both to be held September seventeenth through the nineteenth, item M, approval to host Fido Dust Ferndale in downtown Ferndale on Thursday, July fifteenth, twenty-ten, and to close Plantavon from nine mile north to the alley on Thursday, July fifteenth, from three PM until ten PM, item N, approval to adopt the job, actually, okay, approval to adopt the job description and wage plan for class code seven seventy, fire chief, item O, approval of a severance program letter of understanding with Ask Me Local nine-nine-eight, item P, approval to adopt ordinance number ten eighty-nine to amend chapter seven, Article eleven, massage therapist licensing, item Q, approval to adopt ordinance number ten ninety to amend chapter sixteen, section twelve, special events, item R, approval to adopt ordinance number ten ninety-one to amend chapter sixteen, section sixteen dash three, duty of occupants to remove snow from adjacent property, and ordinance number ten ninety-two to amend chapter sixteen, section sixteen dash four, duty of occupants to remove ice from adjacent property, item S, approval to adopt ordinance number ten ninety-three to amend chapter eighteen, adopting the Motor Carrier Safety Act of nineteen sixty-three, item T, approval of the agreement with Siemens Industry Inc. to provide preventative maintenance and emergency repair services for the HVAC systems in eight city buildings, and to charge the first year expense of fifty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars as follows, um, divided among the Public Improvement Fund, library, and library maintenance, item U, approval to purchase eleven electronic parking meters and housings for four thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars, excluding shipping from Duncan Parking Technologies, and to charge the expenses to the Auto Parking Fund, item V, approval of the three-year unit price bid from Hartwell Cement Company of Oak Park to repair street pavement cuts be accepted, and that the first year of the expense of approximately three hundred and forty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars be charged to the Water and Sewer Fund, and, item W, approval of the bills and payrolls as certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, take a deep breath, um, longest, it's the longest, uh, sentence I think I've ever seen.
In a while, yeah.
Which items would, uh, members like to remove for further discussion?
Your Honor, may I remove item, um, N, and actually ask that it be tabled until our next meeting?
And as in Nancy?
And as in Nancy.
You've got it, anything else?
Your Honor, I'd ask, I'm sorry, I would ask that item P be pulled.
P as in Peter?
Correct.
H as in ham.
Thank you.
And, Your Honor, I believe Mr. Fatides wants to withdraw T, we'll bring that back for consideration.
Not as approval, so we're removing item T, so unless there's more, then I think the motion would be to adopt the consent agenda items, uh, A through, the last one, W? Well, should we, uh, move to the consent, uh, adopt the consent agenda, it's in, in its entirety, with, uh, seven Ps in Paul, seven Hs in Ham, uh, be discussed after the regular agenda, and to table, uh, items seven, N as in Nancy, and seven T as in Tom, uh, indefinitely. Well done, second?
Second.
Lennon seconds Galloway motion, discussion, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, you guys are so far ahead of me, hold on. Okay, Councilmembers Baker.
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Covy.
Yes, as well, thank you. Next item, Madam Clerk.
That brings us to regular agenda item A, consideration of the city attorney's report concerning medical marijuana.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, Dan Chris, would you give a brief synopsis of your two-page report?
I will, Your Honor, uh, as Councils are aware, back in two thousand and seven, there was a statewide initiative petition to place before the voters of the state of Michigan the issue of whether or not to allow, uh, medical marijuana, uh, in two thousand and eight, uh, under the city charter provision, there was a, uh, city elector initiative petition that was, uh, prepared- that was prepared and approved to put whether the city should allow medical marijuana before the voters of the city of Ferndale. In November of 2008, both those initiative petitions passed by a rather large percentage. And what the medical, Michigan Medical Marijuana Act now provides is that under state law, the possession of medical marijuana by patients or caregivers would be precluded from state law prosecution or enforcement. That does not address the issue of whether or not there could be any enforcement under federal law. Federal law still precludes the possession or utilization of marijuana as a, as a Schedule I narcotic. However, this year, the federal administration has indicated that it does not intend to prosecute those caregivers or patients who are in possession of medical marijuana as long as those individuals are operating or possessing, consistent with state law. This new legislation has resulted in a number of municipalities trying to get their arms around the issue and determine whether or not the state initiative language in the state law is sufficient to address local concerns. And municipalities across the state are electing in large measure to do one of three things. They are deciding to ignore the issue and not seek to provide any additional guidance or clarification at a local level as it relates to medical marijuana. They are, in some cases, electing to clarify their ordinances to indicate that no use or business occupancy can be undertaken that's not in harmony or consistent with state, local, and federal law. And the effect of that would essentially be to preclude or prohibit medical marijuana facilities by caregivers. The third is to attempt to fashion some type of local regulation to address what those particular communities have determined to be local concern. And this council is aware, back earlier this year, in January or February of this year, the Plan Commission had weighed in on this issue and, and really given some thoughtful consideration as to whether or not it was a issue that should be further regulated at the local level by the city of Ferndale. At that time, there really had not been any applications submitted to the city and there was very few at that time that were in operation across the state. The Plan Commission at, after studying the issue, had made a recommendation to council that it not undertake any regulation of this issue and simply pass on providing any local ordinance or regulation at that time. It did provide in its recommendation that to the extent that there was any commercialization of that issue, it would at that point recommend reconsideration of the issue. Since that time earlier this year, there have been a number of applications that have been submitted to CDS for evaluation and they're taking a lot of different forms. There's not one standard prototype that has been applied. But they are, some of those that have been submitted seem to be taking the form of cooperative, which is an, a cooperative type of business activity, seeking to have a, a medical marijuana facility. And so the purpose of this agenda item tonight is for council to decide whether it deems there to be an issue of concern that should be addressed at the local level. I have in my communication provided a couple of items that seem to be at issue and certainly are question marks with respect to how the state statute operates. For example, the state statute is silent as it relates to medical marijuana in a school drug-free zone. The state statute provides that you can't have drugs within 1,000 feet of school districts. The Medical Marijuana Act is silent as it relates to that. Another issue potentially for council, should it decide that it wanted to further study this issue, would be whether it wishes caregivers who seek to undertake a business activity to be allowed to undertake such use in residential districts. And that, that seems to be kind of a threshold point that, that I think council should give thought to. The additional option that I note in my communication would be to provide that any such commercial endeavor of marijuana caregiver be subject to a special land use process as a more heightened scrutiny, which would allow for specific concerns that council might have with an applicant to be addressed to mitigate or reduce any adverse consequences on adjacent uses. So that's my short introduction.
I appreciate the introduction. Here's how I'd like to suggest we do this. Let's, let's see if we can get some further input, assuming Marcia's still here, from our CDS director, with regards to her thoughts, including where she thinks the Planning Commission is. I would also ask, Councilwoman Baker, you, you're the liaison to the Planning Commission.
I've got their recommendation right here and I can speak a bit to that discussion. Although you and I were in San Antonio when those votes were taken, so I would prefer that Marcia.
Do you mind coming up to the dais, Mrs. Shear? And then we also, and I just learned this, that we actually had a facility open at some point a week or so ago, and then there were some issues with the CDS department and they've since been closed down. I believe there's representatives here today. I also want to recognize the city council or city commissioner from Royal Oak who came in, Mr. Jim Razor. Welcome to Ferndale. Can you, can you shed further light for us?
We currently have about eight applications for different types of medical marijuana facilities in the city, including those who would actually like to farm, those who want cafes with coffee and brownies, and those who want to dispense under legal caregiver status to license or those who are permitted to use medical marijuana by law. The procedure so far has been to forward a basic checklist that they provide to us that gives us more information. And when that information is submitted, it is sent to the city attorney for review. And when he comes back with a ruling, then CDS acts on that ruling. Excuse me.
Okay. Anything you, stay up there if you would for a moment. Anything you can add as far as the Planning Commission is?
Well, I do have a question first on the facility that I wasn't aware that anything had opened on Hilton. Had they not applied for the proper permit? Is that why they were closed?
No, certificate of occupancy.
There was a C of O problem. Okay. And from what I understand from conversations after the Planning Commission extensive two month discussion on this and subsequent vote and recommendation, the Planning Commission was focusing mainly on the idea of regulating sales or uses that were home-based. They were not considering the types of applications that have come in in the meantime. This was back in February when even the Michigan Municipal League didn't have a recommendation on this because municipalities, as they still are, were trying to figure out sort of the fairest and best way to deal with this on many levels. So I wonder if you could just give us an overview of that conversation at the Planning Commission level and how, what they thought we might see in the city has differed from what we've actually seen in terms of applications?
The Planning Commission felt that, that there was not enough profit in medical marijuana in order for it to be a commercial activity and that it would in all cases be home-based. I believe that was their understanding and that's where these restrictions that you see before you lie. They compared it much to chemotherapy in a home setting. But to just add a personal thought to that, the actual usage of the medical marijuana in someone's home is not what we're addressing here. We, just as the chemical or chemotherapy in someone's home is not what we're addressing. We're addressing the dispensing of that, and those are the applications that we have received, those that want to actually dispense medical marijuana for use, most cases off premises.
May I ask another question?
Good.
When it comes to other businesses, a CVS or a Rite Aid who dispense, you know, regulated narcotics and have pharmacists and trained professionals on site, how do we deal with those businesses? Do they have any type of special land use requirements because they have special narcotics on site or secure?
Not due to the narcotics, but if a, if a pharmacy had a drive-through, it's the drive-through aspect that actually is a special land use, not the narcotics aspect. You would have to ask perhaps the police department about regulating the narcotics aspect. It's not a zoning issue.
Can a drugstore be within 1,000 feet of a school?
Yes.
With regard, if the council doesn't mind if we can talk about the one business that did open and then get closed. I, I'm assuming that since there's limits on the number of plants and the number of patients that a caregiver can have, it's, I think, is it five patients or five plants?
Ask the city attorney.
I'm sorry, I should know this.
Per caregiver, the state statute allows for a, a caregiver to have five patients.
Five patients and he can grow 12 plants per patient, which means that one person at the most could grow 72 plants.
Sixty.
I'm sorry. My, good thing I don't know directions or multiplication. So how does, how does a business then operate in terms of, it just seems like it's not that big of a clientele that you would be able to operate a business?
That was what the Planning Commission was inferring as well, but it seems that this co-op situation.
Is it a co-op situation?
A bunch of people buy into a company, the company buys a building, and then all the people get a right to share in the use of the building. So you could have.
Multiple.
100 care primary, you know, caregivers growing 60 plants. We could have 600 marijuana plants growing in a single building. Under that example, or more.
I see someone shaking their head, no, but.
We have a number of applicants in the audience.
Can you share the certificate of occupancy? Is that something that we require?
Yes.
We require?
Yes.
So even though it wasn't a change of use?
Yes.
Okay.
We always have. Even businesses downtown, that change from retail, we require a change, oh, we require.
Did that applicant go through all the motions? Did they come to you and apply and tell you what they wanted to do and fill out?
They took step one, but not step two or step three. And they are in the process now, they have submitted their preliminary checklist. It has been forwarded to the city attorney. They are scheduling their certificate of occupancy inspections. And I've assured them that it will move along as quickly as the city attorney is able to review it.
Okay. And what zone is that?
MXD 2.
Which would probably be a zone that would be quite permissible, permissible?
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Go ahead. With folks in the audience nodding their head that perhaps I misstated what the law is, Dan, is there anything in Michigan law or Ferndale law that would prohibit multiple growers or caregivers from buying a large warehouse space and sharing in that space as long as the number of plants equaled the amount per caregiver or less?
No.
So they could buy, so a bunch of folks could form a cooperative, LLC, whatever they wanted to, buy a huge space, each individual?
Nothing, it's not addressed in the Marijuana Act. It just simply says caregiver, it's allowed up to five patients. Now, like, I mean, I think there's several different models that may be being considered by, by certain applicants. My understanding, some may try to be patients as well as caregivers and, and then there's a question of whose marijuana they are, they, they are transferring or dispensing to other parties. But, but there's nothing under local ordinance that would preclude two or three caregivers from acquiring some space or having some space and multiply that times the five patients and then times the 12.
And then is the city of Ferndale charged with the regulation of that? So are we going to have people going in and counting plants? I mean, is that the regulation regime?
That's not what I'm intending, but really, I'm not intending anything. I think the council needs to get its arms around generally whether or not it thinks this issue should be further studied in light of the model that is being submitted, which appears to have a more commercial component than what the Plan Commission, Planning Commission had originally envisioned back in January or February.
Who, I'm sorry, who would regulate how many plants were being grown? Would that fall to our police force locally? Is that a state agency? Is that, has that not been determined yet?
Well, it would be the Department of Health, but it's, it's set forth in the state act, the number of plants. Doesn't really go into.
Enforcement.
Enforcement.
Through the chip?
I have a suggestion. I'd like to entertain the point of view from Captain Collins from the police department to hear what they have to say, since we are collecting information about how to craft our policy here.
Certainly. I think my intention was to really let everybody speak to some extent, if, if that's possible. And I, I have a couple of questions for Marcia, so I'll ask her to come back up again eventually. Captain?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And you would like to?
Well, I'd like to hear your just point of view on helping us understand what some of the consequences could be. I know there's a lot of, the police departments are talking to each other regionally about what, how these cities are handling businesses.
Several of our concerns, Councilwoman, are going to be the security of these organizations or these businesses, if they're allowed to open up. We would, of course, would like to meet with them if that, if they are approved, to make sure that they understand in relation to where they are located within the city, the different pratfalls that we're going to have as far as security, the possibility of when it becomes known what that business does, that the business could be broken into. Of course, we would want to discourage young adults from being anywhere near these type of facilities. We would, of course, you know, make sure that the proprietors of these organizations know the risks, risks they're involved with robbery and those type of things that, that some, some areas have experienced in the Western United States. Again, a lot of these things are just wild guesses at this point because we don't, we don't have anything that has opened up yet in our town. There are, we have to discourage and prohibit the use of medical marijuana on the premises. I believe that's in violation of, of the act itself. So there's many different, and until we start getting into it, there's many different things. I think that, that the approaches are that you leave them completely alone or that you restrict them completely and someplace in the middle that we, that locally, that we have some controls by ordinance or whatever is allowed by law. And I think that if we are going to allow this to open up in our community, that the, that the city takes a very proactive approach as to control and how we are going to administer this and how we're going to follow through with inspections, if that's allowed through the act and those type of things.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Captain, it looks like some, well, of all the communities surveyed in our city attorney's report to us, it looks like the city of Royal Oak is considering either an outright ban or requiring them to locate on Woodward Avenue, a high visibility district. Is your, if we were to allow them and to regulate them through a zoning ordinance, would you prefer that these be in high visibility areas or, you know, like an M1 or M2 district where it would be lower visibility? What is easier for you to police and?
You know, Councilman, to try, I haven't given that much. You know, Councilman, which I haven't given that much thought, but both of them have their positives and their negatives. Putting them into, tucking them away, if you would, into the industrial section, the downside to that is that enforcement-wise, we would, we would have a, you know, a less traveled area than patrol officers generally would travel, and they would make that to make sure that we don't have kids hanging around, those type of activities used in the neighborhoods. And then again, on the, purely from a non-police aspect, if you're putting them all on Woodward Avenue, you become, you know, Medical Marijuana USA. So I really don't know the answer to that. I'd like to give it some thought before I would give you a direct opinion, but I'm sure that both have their advantages and disadvantages. But putting them in one place, I think, whether we choose a high-traffic area or tuck them away in an industrial section or some other third, third or fourth option, I believe that that's probably, I would, I would lead more towards clusters than I would have them all spread out.
Quick question, if I may, to the city attorney. Stay there, you would, Captain. You did list some cities, you listed dozens of cities or so that I think most of them were talking about an outright ban. But there's hundreds and hundreds of cities in Michigan. So are lots of cities doing nothing and or?
A number of cities have not taken action, of cities and townships. A number of other communities are in the midst of studying the issue, some of them through affirmative action of imposing a moratorium while it, while it studies the issue with really no necessary indication of how the result of such legislation might shake out. And then there's, there's some that are prohibiting it. And there are communities that are allowing it. Some of them expressly, where they have undertaken ordinance amendments to their zoning districts that allow it, and others that are allowing it, but they really haven't taken any affirmative step to say that it's okay.
Did you list any of those cities in our?
Well, Ypsilanti would be one.
All right.
But I, I don't think I list, I'm not sure if I listed Ypsilanti or not.
We, okay. My understand, I'm assuming that Ann Arbor would have a pretty liberal stance on it. I don't know, but you say Ypsilanti does, or is this finished, or are they working on it?
Ypsilanti has a care center, facility that is in operation where there was not any express zoning regulation that addressed the issue. Their planner is in the midst of drafting more express language, which would allow it. But right now, it's allowed in the absence of any type of regulation.
And the captain mentioned that use is prohibited. Is that part of the act, that use?
Smoking in any public place is prohibited. There's a number of provisions that apply as to how the use of the medical marijuana can be undertaken.
So a group of patients, because I've had this question where people want to gather at a coffee shop, patients together and use that. Is that, that's not legal?
Well, smoking marijuana in any public place is not allowed under the act.
The question for Captain Collins, the special land use procedure, the planning commission overseas and the community development department overseas, and I think Mr. Valentine just left, figures, he just went through this and just had his special land use approved for this evening. Again, for a business that would have a lot of equipment on site, you know, it would be in his best interest to keep the location secure and to make sure that the police knew what was going on so that they could help keep his location secure. Through that special land use process, one of the steps is circulating the application and all of the appended materials, including the site plans, to all of our internal departments, including the police department, for comments. The planning commission then generally incorporates those comments pretty much verbatim. You know, if they, if the DPW says to reroute a sewer and the police department says to replace a security door or something, we pretty much incorporate those verbatim into the special land use requirements or rerouting of traffic or lighting requirements. So under the current special land use process, is that something, I don't know that you've ever done the comments before. It's probably the chief, isn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm kind of wondering if it's something that would allow the police department to weigh in, you know, in some specific cases, having a full look at site plans, having a full look at really the business operation plan, if that's.
Well, that's certainly a good start. That's certainly a place that we would, that we would have some input in some, so long as that we had a detailed plan, that we knew what they were doing and how. And again, this is a learning process for all of us on this particular issue. So, but yes, that's certainly, I think the city attorney's input obviously would be very helpful, but it is a, but that would certainly be one venue that we could, we could explore the type of concerns we may have.
I think we definitely need to talk about, I've never personally dealt with a special land use in a residential district. I don't know that there are any that come up with any regularity. I don't have the zoning ordinance in front of me, but for our continued conversation, because I know we're not trying to craft anything at the table tonight, thinking about how this impacts both potentially commercial and residential districts, I think we may have all different sizes of operations and people interested in operations of it.
Sure. Well, from my viewpoint, and there's still time to talk, and if there's a motion, then members of the audience can weigh in as well. I would like to see us take whatever next step is necessary, be that to the, to the planning commission and asking them for a specific direction, including you mentioning creating it as a special land use. Other option would be some sort of zoning. You've heard the discussions about locations. I would lean, I would personally lean to not allowing any kind of operations in neighborhoods. I mean, we already have rules about you can't open a business in a neighborhood.
You can have a home-based business.
A home-based business, but not traffic and visitors and, and all that. So I think we ought to try to protect the, and again, none of this, none of this impacts on a patient, him or herself, who is at their home and has the prescribed amount for themselves and/or one individual growing the limit that they are allowed to grow for one person, I'm assuming.
That's absolutely correct.
I appreciate that, Captain. So that's sort of where I'm at. I'm not sure where other council members are, what the best route for us to take. I just, I want to again say that I don't like the idea of just issuing a blanket moratorium and waiting for someone else to figure this out. I think that's sort of a chicken way out of it and would like to see us be proactive and seek, seek advice from Ypsilanti or Ann Arbor or Hazel Park.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I differ with you a little bit. I support your goal in to have a good decision here and a quick decision and that we have a defined path forward of what we're going to do to get to our policy. But I am willing to entertain a short moratorium. While most cities have enacted a six-month moratorium, I would consider it two to three months, just so that we can get this right. I'd rather not rush into it and have all our ducks in a row, because right now, we're approving by lawyer, right? We are approving our site plan reviews by lawyer, which, that means Marcia, our community development services, has to send everything, site plan review to the lawyer, which is an extra step in our process because she has administrative authority to make that happen. And now we're spending additional dollars to approve site plan reviews outside of what normal applicants pay. So that is one of the reasons, to save money, is to do the moratorium while we figure out this policy and look at how we balance our regulations, in which Captain Collins says is finding the middle ground here. So I'm with the mayor, you know, we'd like not to have it in the neighborhoods, but how do we do that well? So I'm compromising a shorter moratorium.
That's where I am too. I mean, I think this is a significant change in the way that we think about marijuana and even how we think about businesses and in healthcare. So I think we want to get it right before we put something in place, get people cited into our city, doing business with the best of intentions, and then find out that we didn't quite get things the way that we should have. So I think a shortened moratorium, maybe three months to do the research, come up with proposal. I'm not sure that necessarily kicking it back to the plan commission is the thing that we have to do, but I guess if we're going to go through the zoning ordinance, we have to, right?
Right. I think it's a combination of approaches here, right? Through the zoning as well as through the policy, through the lawyer recommendations as well. So.
I agree with Melanie on this, on the moratorium. I think we need to do it right. Integrity of our neighborhoods are at stake, and we have to figure out where we want them in the industrial area. We want them to protect the integrity of our downtown too. So there's a lot to figure out.
I do want to be clear, though, the moratorium says that we are not allowing it to happen, right? That's not what the moratorium is for.
No.
Just, well, we wouldn't allow it to happen for 60 to 90 days.
Right, exactly.
Whatever your motion is.
We're tabling this for, basically.
Well, I appreciate everybody's input. Again, I guess my disappointment is that this is not a new issue, that this has been with us for two years, that the voters were there, the voters made their decisions, and we could have and maybe should have got our ducks in a row sooner. And I guess just the word moratorium to me is a negative, is a negative word. I don't want to rush anything either. I want to see us get the rules in place, whether it be land use process, get the information from the police department, from the attorneys as well. But again, we could simply ask for our staff to begin to craft the regulations that are needed and with work from the planning commission and CDS department, get what we need to get. But whatever word we want to call it, is, we still need to, yes, ma'am.
Through the chair, I would, I would want to make sure that the, the motion doesn't necessarily bounce it directly back to the planning commission, particularly if this is a tight time period. Just being practical, it's summertime. If we need to move forward quickly, perhaps the staff brings a recommendation to the planning commission rather than the planning commission deliberating and crafting something. It just may be more expeditious. And I know that you and I have talked about this in the past, but I would just offer that you know more on this topic perhaps than any of us up here. And I wish that, you know, all of the communications that we've gotten about examples from other cities, including examples from around the country, have come from the police department or from our city attorney and not from, you know, someone who's an advocate or an organization, you know, an AIDS organization that has constituents that are advocates for this. So I would offer, you know, had you wanted it to move faster, you perhaps could have been slightly more proactive.
Sure. And all of the discussions and advocacy that I did a year ago just didn't get anywhere, but it's cool. Does anyone have a resolution then? Has anyone crafted something that we can move on?
I'm going to take a stab here. I move to enact a three-month moratorium on licenseings of any medical marijuana business for the city to consider how to regulate medical marijuana in our land use ordinance and
Code of Ordinance.
Code of, and Code of Ordinances.
Second. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Enact a three-month moratorium on licenseings of any medical marijuana business for the city to consider how to regulate medical marijuana in our land use ordinance and our Code of Ordinances. Correct? Is that?
Would your motion include directing staff then to come up with recommendations?
Thank you. I move to direct staff to create a medical marijuana policy and enact a three-month moratorium on license of any medical marijuana business for the city to consider how to regulate in our land use ordinance and Code of Ordinances. Is that correct?
Well, you kind of zigzagged around that issue, but you did good.
Yes, thank you.
And who was just a second? I do.
Mike Williams.
Councilman Lennon, seconds. I mentioned the staff part because if your goal
No, I concur.
If your goal is, is to really have something in place by 90 days, then the staff has to move on it. Otherwise, we get to 90 days and nothing else has happened.
I also like to say, they can complete it before 90 days too. They don't have to take the full 90 days.
And the staff includes the city manager, Marcia Shear?
Yes.
Dan Christ, Captain Collins?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. This would be an opportunity or a time if anyone in the audience wishes to speak in any, in any capacity on the issue at hand, which is the motion. Come.
Hello, Donna S. Reese, 247 East Woodland, resident here in Ferndale. It's, we all know that the citizens of Michigan have spoken and the citizens of Ferndale have spoken several times. We all honor that. However, I think it's important to understand that what they all voted for was medical marijuana. And so I think it's important that as you craft this document, that the medical issues are brought to bear. I wonder, based upon the readings that I and you have done of how this has developed in other parts of our nation, that in fact, we make sure of several issues. One, if it's medical marijuana, then how do we in what turns out to be dispensaries of some sort or another, how do we, how are we sure of the source of that marijuana? And therefore, how do we know that it really abides by the letter of the law for the state of Michigan, which that it was to be grown by local caregivers for the person who is going to consume it? I think that is difficult when we're thinking about these large organizations. I think the other thing that is really difficult about it is that it is by prescription from a doctor whose credentials need to be verified and the identity of the person presenting the script also needs to be identified, i.e. some person can't just write their own script on some sort of pad. When we think about this relative to pharmacies, all of this is all laid out by regulation. How are we going to do that? The issue of a pharmacy, you have a licensed professional who does, who is licensed to distribute medications based upon his pharmacological knowledge and background. How are we going to provide that in this kind of setting? You've all seen me up here several times, and you know that I'm usually here representing southeast Oakland in our coalition, and our mission is to increase the health and safety of our communities primarily through the reduction of substance abuse and primarily for kids. So when it comes down to it, it's primarily for us, about kids, and keeping our kids safe and drug-free. And we do that when adults model good behavior relative to that. We know, and I could, I could regale you with lots of data about when kids start using substances early, including marijuana, how there are negative consequences on their academic performance, their health, and their later life success. I could talk about all of that, but in the, I want, just want to bring up one point that talks about a social norm, and that's one other thing that I'd like you to consider as we're drafting this policy. And that is, how are these facilities going to be marketed? Marketed maybe in signage, maybe in, I mean, it could be all the way to billboards, I guess. But the reality is, when we set up a norm in our community that drug use is acceptable in some way, shape, or form, we are automatically increasing youth use. So let's think about these things as we move forward. Remember, the voters spoke clearly, but it was medical marijuana they were speaking of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese. We, of course, we don't regulate the prescriptions and all that. The Michigan Department of Community Health has that process. Yes, Commissioner?
Miss, most honorable mayor, council members, Mr. City Attorney. My name is Jim Razor. My address is 321 South Williams in Royal Oak. Good evening. And with me is my client, Nick Agro and Tony Agro, members of the LLC and the property at issue. And I have some general comments today. Of course, I'm representing a private client today and not the city of Royal Oak, even though it's delightful to be here, to watch your council in action. And I appreciate everything that you're doing. I know that it's on a voluntary basis. I know the meetings run late, and I know that they're pretty thorny issues. As a matter of fact, in Royal Oak, we tackled this issue by essentially agreeing to kick the can down the road for six months. And I think it was an error. And I think what you have going for you is great city departments. Mrs. Shear was very helpful today. Your city attorney is Your city attorney is one of the best attorneys I know in the municipal area. And I think that if you look at this situation, you have specific zoning ordinances that keep your neighborhood safe. You have prescriptions against, no pun intended, any sort of home occupation or business that brings people to the home. You have zoning ordinances that allow for clinics, that allow for coffee shops, that allow for production, allow for agriculture, every use that you're talking about. So, really looking at it as a special land use or something special is elevating it to a status that it really doesn't deserve. The voters have spoken. This is a medicine for people who have a prescription from a doctor. They go to a caregiver and state law regulates it. So, the question for municipalities is, how are we going to regulate this use if we want to go up and over and above our zoning? Now, that's a policy issue that I think that you folks have to decide, but, you know, this is a peaceful use of a medicine that was, at least in Ferndale and Royal Oak, overwhelmingly supported by voters, like seventy percent. It's good for our vacant storefronts, and it's also good to take a bite out of crime because as the supply of legitimate medical marijuana increases, what you're going to see is a decrease in crime. And I reject the reasoning that says that just because these facilities are here, you're going to have an uptake in crime. Liquor stores and banks have a lot more crime than medical marijuana dispensaries in Colorado and California. If you think about it, a liquor store, the booze is there open and obvious. Anybody can come in, reach across the counter, and grab it and get out. The same thing with a pharmacy. You can jump across the counter. There's a lot more potent drugs in a pharmacy than there are in a marijuana dispensary. Let me turn, though, to this particular use because I think that there's been some misinformation. So, I want to educate you on this, and it'll take me about ten minutes to do that, and I appreciate your patience. Our clients leased this building on 515, and the building that they leased at 326 Hilton was a pre-existing building. This building had already had site plan review approval and a certificate of occupancy. And I don't know exactly how you do...handout, so Madam Clerk, may I approach?
Certainly.
Thank you. Now, on the second page of this handout, the first page is the piece of paper that's posted on my client's door that I hope to persuade you was improperly posted and should be taken down. But to do that, I want to show you the pre-existing document, the second page. The second page of this is the certificate of occupancy that was issued to 362 Hilton for office and payroll processing, signed by Mark Howell, who, by the way, is the same person that signed this "Do Not Occupy" notice. And this was signed by him on February 12th, 2009. And that said that this building was in compliance with the requirements of the 2006 Michigan Building Code for Classification Group B. And that's important, and I'll tell you why. Now, this thing that says "do not occupy" says that it can't be occupied until an inspection is completed and all violation is corrected, no C of O. We all agree, and Mrs. Shear agreed with me today, that this building is in the proper zone. MX-2 supports, clinics, offices, any sort of use that you would say that this is. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, I didn't design this in a way to do it all the way. If I could walk you folks through the Building Code, the construction code, real quick, that I'm handing out.
Sorry, you haven't identified your client. Is your client cast and crew payroll LLC?
No, my client is Clinical Research LLC, the current occupant of the building. But I want to show you, Mr. Galloway, Councilman Galloway, why, if that's the way you've been doing it, it doesn't appear to be the right way according to the Building Code, which I passed out. Now, if you look in the Building Code, it says in Section 110, which I highlighted, "No building or structure shall be used or occupied, and no change of the existing occupancy classification shall be made." Occupancy classification is what he's in a C of O. And a C of O, as you can see in Building Code B, which is on use and occupancy classifications in Chapter Three, and this is on the last page of the handout for your convenience, Business Group B is what the C of O was issued for on this premises. And Business Group B is what my client is doing business as. So, what your community development department is suggesting is that a C of O has to be issued for each building every time there's a change of tenant, not a change of what the Building Code calls occupational classification. And according to the Building Code, that's just not the case. The fact of the matter is, the same official who issued a C of O certifying that this building was safe for its occupancy in 2009, a year ago, is now saying it's not safe for its occupancy. Well, the fact of the matter is, the police captain that testified earlier was at the building, as well as a detective and one of the patrol officers. My clients allowed them in. Also, the building official...
Does this speak to the moratorium, the three-month moratorium that we're discussing?
Absolutely. I'm getting there.
Maybe you could sort of show us how it ties together, so...
Well, I guess it ties together because if you do pass a moratorium, I don't believe that it applies to these clients, and I have an obligation to the client to make a record as to why it doesn't. If you give me a little leeway with that, I'd appreciate it.
Is this discussion in order? I appreciate it, Councilman. Again, as I stated at the beginning of the discussion, I wanted to let everybody have their opportunity to speak as much as possible, and Mr. Razor did call me out of courtesy and asked me if it would be all right if he attended the meeting because he does have a business that did open and now has been closed, and the business will be directly affected by the motion that we're discussing. But I am going to ask you to wrap it up, sir, because this is administrative discussions and our CDS director is there. You said you had a good meeting with her today. Our attorney is here. So, I think that council members have heard pretty much. If you could sum up what your position is, I don't know if it'll influence this...
Well, very simply, Mr. Mayor, and I'll do that. Give me two minutes to sum up. This patient resource center opened by the clients is a pre-existing grandfathered use in the MX-2 zone. It was in business at the time that you would pass this moratorium, so I don't believe that it applies. I believe that the Building Code in Section 110.3 and Page Eight of this handout is very clear that the building official could issue a temporary C of O if they wanted to.
We got you. All right, you're back to the administrative stuff. And again, I'm going to ask that Marcia Shear and Dan Christ help you guys figure that one out. But, Mr. Christ, the motion that we have on the table, though, would preclude this business, then, from opening at this point now for ninety days?
Well, in light of the submittals, I think it's appropriate to review what Mr. Razor has submitted as to whether or not there's merit in his contention. But the motion, as stated, would impose a moratorium on any medical marijuana business for a period of ninety days. His issue is whether or not it was already open and was properly opened and should not have been closed in light of this contention that the building use of Building Use B was appropriate and didn't require an additional certificate of occupancy. I'm not prepared to comment on that at this point, but...
Well, that's going to be a legal issue.
Councilman Lennon?
I just had...the only thing...I'm not going to elaborate anymore. I mean, this certificate of occupancy was issued to cast and crew payroll in '09. Not the name of your...which client's business name? Clinical Relief LLC. It wasn't issued to them. So, administrative whoever will have to take this up, and Mr. Christ, the city attorney, will have to figure out the galley.
Thank you, sir. What, Royal Oak did a what, a sixty-day or...I'm sorry?
Hundred and eighty days.
A six-month moratorium?
Correct.
And what's happening in the six months?
Well, unfortunately, nothing's happening in the six months. We already...our process was our planning commission had already come up with zoning ordinance changes, and those zoning ordinance changes were to only have it on Woodward Avenue. We had the opportunity to modify that, do an outright ban, or kick the can down the road for six months. I appreciate what you're doing with having your staff work on the issue during the period of time that you have a moratorium. However, I think you...the last thing that I handed out is the application process that Mrs. Shear is already going through with these businesses, which is asking them for information, asking them for all the things that they do. And this is a kind of a last-minute thing because there wasn't a regulatory process for this because the city hadn't done anything in the two years since the statute was passed. And I think the problem with that approach is that you let people start doing business and then they become pre-existing grandfathered issues. I do think that a moratorium...I think delaying it until your staff can work up some rules and regulations is great. I had the same problem you did, Mr. Mayor. I think moratoriums sound like you're anti-business, anti-progress instead of deliberative. And so, I thought a pause of thirty days to work up some rules was appropriate in Royal Oak. Now, a hundred and eighty days to do nothing, I thought, was inappropriate. I'd be happy to answer any other questions about this client or the proposed moratorium. And it's been my pleasure to address you. I know the hour's late and it's hot.
Thank you, Mr. Razor. Appreciate your time. All right, anyone else? Council...one more, and then council members?
Thank you very much for hearing me, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Rick Thompson. I reside at 8092 Sterling in Centerline. I'm the one and editors of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Magazine. I'm also on the board of Big Daddy's Management Group LLC, and I am one of those people that have made an application to Ms. Marcia Shear previously for approval to develop a medical marijuana-related business in the city of Ferndale itself. Your suggestion of a moratorium, although perhaps directed from the right intent, is not necessary simply because there's enough state law already or local ordinance law already to be able to craft an ordinance, should one be necessary. I myself have personally been involved in several negotiations with city councils, including Dryden. I attended a Royal Oak meeting as well and Oak Park, too. The necessity of a moratorium in order to get your ducks in a row may not necessarily be true. I certainly read the interview from the Mayor Covey that he thought that perhaps we did not need any additional regulations in the city of Ferndale, that their current regulations were sufficient in order to guide the formation of these businesses and their location. And I'm here to tell you, I agree with his position. Having received the Ferndale packet from Ms. Shear, actually, Mr. Christ and I played phone tag today, and I believe I spoken to Mr. Bruno on the telephone previously. So, I've been lobbying the city pretty hard to get this put in place for quite some time now. The packet that we received is actually quite extensive as far as the checklist goes. It's very detailed. It asks about intention. It asks about permissions from landlord. It asks about documentation detailing comprehensive plan of operation. It includes a request of a map to make sure that you are not within a certain number of feet from any prohibited areas. The hurdles that you've already established certainly seem to be sufficient enough to screen out anyone that doesn't have the proper intent with a medical marijuana business, anyone that doesn't have a nonprofit designation, or anyone that doesn't have their ducks in a row. The need for a moratorium seems frivolous at this point simply because your current level of bureaucracy is sufficient to take care of it. Having seen other communities, Dryden specifically, where we went to the city council, we had them insert an ordinance inside the city itself, which allowed us to open a facility there. That was a very simple move. What you have here is a much more complex, much more organized group of ordinances already in place than we have in a city like that. Therefore, your current zoning rules are sufficient to take care of anything that you need regarding this. Horticulturally speaking, should someone choose to grow, you have rules regarding that already. Should someone choose to retail, you have rules regarding that already. You have in place all of the key elements that you need in order to make lasting decisions right here at this table, right here at this time. Should you choose to do a moratorium, which is absolutely understandable if that's the way you go, those of us in the community that are educated, that have participated previously and are familiar with ordinance law throughout the state of Michigan would love an opportunity to be involved in those negotiations. I currently do. We have a facility that's already up and running in the city of Oak Park and has been for several months now, doing exactly what we suggest that we would do here in Ferndale. To date, there has been no legal issues. There have been no city problems. There have been no...none of the fears that the police department or that perhaps the media may wish to put into your minds in regards to medical marijuana facilities.
Do you have a facility operating in Oak Park?
That's absolutely true.
And it's been operating for several months?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Yep.
Who regulates...I mean, apparently you have some experience with it. Who regulates the day-to-day operations of this Oak Park dispensary?
You're self-regulated, just like any other business.
Self-regulated?
Mm-hmm. The Michigan Department of Community...
CVS doesn't self-regulate with Vicodin, and they don't just sort of, you know, pass it out to whoever walks in with a note from their mom.
Certainly true.
So...huh?
That's definitely true. You certainly can't dispense Vicodin at anybody that walks in off the street. Neither can you dispense medical marijuana. The statutes and the law...
Well, I know, but what I'm asking is, so how is that regulated? That's regulated, you're saying, by self-regulation?
I understand. I misunderstood your suggestion.
Help me understand that.
When someone comes into our facility, they're required to prove that they're a member of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Program. Now, that's accomplished one of two different ways. The law itself states that if you have your laminated card, then you are a legal participant. We require that proof every single time someone visits the facility. The law also allows, since the Michigan Department of Community Health is so far behind in issuing those laminated cards, that your paperwork, after twenty days of having had your check cashed by the Michigan Department of Community Health, is a legitimate legal substitute for your paperwork. Mr. Christ is nodding his head over there. It's a very crucial part of this simply because the Michigan Department of Community Health is so overloaded at this point because the response has been amazing.
Okay, so, if someone comes in with their laminated card, which I assume is a valid piece of state identification or the proper documentation...
Yes, sir.
...from the Michigan Department of Community Health.
Mm-hmm.
So, what's the verification on, you know, the quality of the, you know, product supplied or the prescription written?
First of all, there's no prescription. I know that people want to use the term "prescription" and "recommendation" interchangeably, but they really are not the same. The state of Michigan allows a recommendation for the use of medical marijuana by a physician, not a prescription. A prescription is a document that a doctor signs which entitles you to a certain amount of medication to be delivered from a federally regulated facility. We do not have that situation in Michigan. Therefore, we do not have any system to do what you just asked about.
So, there's no audit trail to demonstrate that this came from Dr. Smith at 123 Elm Street in Troy?
There is an audit trail at the Michigan Department of Community Health. Everyone in the program is registered in a database there, which is accessible to law enforcement only through very strict safeguards in order to protect HIPAA laws. Ourselves and our facility, we do not keep any medical records on file at that particular place because that would violate HIPAA laws since we are not able to do that. Therefore, we make sure that every person that comes to our facility has the proper identification each and every time they visit us. We do not trust that someone has been there for three or four times, so we know what they look like. Every time someone visits a facility, they must prove their legitimacy to be there.
And so, you verify the recommendation, or is that done by the state?
The state verifies all recommendations. State verifies physicians. Everything that goes through in order for you to be accepted into the medical marijuana program is run through the Michigan Department of Community Health.
Okay, so there's no verification...there's no need to have this written recommendation presented at the time of collecting the product?
Absolutely, there is, yes. You must prove that you are a legitimate member of the program each and every time you visit, which means that either you have your laminated card or you have your paperwork from the Michigan Department of Community Health. It's absolutely essential that that be on your person every single time you are in possession of medical marijuana. Otherwise, you are in violation of the law. We will not allow it. You must have that as a patient or as a caregiver.
It's a state-issued card.
Certainly is. Certainly is.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Are there other businesses open that you know of in other cities?
Absolutely, yes. In fact, there are medical marijuana businesses all over the place. Southfield itself is quite prolific with this. There will be medical marijuana certification centers. There are also grow shops. There are places that specialize in the construction of grow rooms itself. There are many different ancillary businesses that come from this. There are many different ways that the city, like Ferndale, could profit from having a thriving medical marijuana community, a business community in this area, and it would be free from crime and free from problems with the locals.
Did the Oak Park City Council discuss any of this, or...
Yes, in fact, we met with the Oak Park City Council in January, and we're in ongoing discussions right now also.
Hazel Park?
Hazel Park, we've spoken to Hazel Park several times, and they were very eager early in 2010, and then for whatever reason, they've decided to slow down. Royal Oak itself has been through several different derivations of their proposed ordinances. At one point, they were looking at requiring all of the medical marijuana grown in the city to be confined into city buildings in a specific zone. That was obviously not lawful. So, they've done several different things. And obviously, the mistake of passing an ordinance that is not lawful, it would be greater than waiting a little bit to make a proper decision. I think the Mayor Covey's decision or his statement earlier, though, that that's been adequate time for this to be researched, and that should already have been a decision that was easy to make at this point, I think is very valid, however.
Thank you.
Does the chair have a question?
Please.
Did you speak...did you start speaking to these cities while they were crafting their ordinance, or did you come to council first or while council was considering what was already on the table? Or were you proactive in reaching out to the community prior to coming to council?
In the same way that we're doing right now.
Okay.
The medical marijuana community is very well...very knowledgeable. There are many forums and chatrooms and social networking areas where we communicate about different areas. You'll notice the number of participants here today. I would guess that it would be larger than what you would normally have at a city council meeting. We're very good at getting out the word. We're very good at getting out the word about communities that are potentially considering adopting our ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today.
Hello. We're going to ask now, we're going to go to a one-minute limit just so that we can keep moving through.
I could be really quick. My name is Jamie Lowell. I'm one of the owners of the Third Coast Compassion Center in Ypsilanti, which was mentioned here tonight. And just in order to help you come to some conclusions about things and answer a lot of the questions that have been asked, we've had several municipalities come visit our place and we'd extend an invitation to you also so we can show you what we do and how it's done and discuss it with you so you can get a better idea of how this works. And I'd like to second, you know, a lot of things the gentleman before me said. We've been in operation for several months and have had no issues whatsoever. All we've done is help a lot of people and help to economically develop a section of town. That's all I'd say. But you are absolutely invited and I'd be happy to email you information on that if you'd like to come visit us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm Reverend Gregory Lowery from UBU Ministries here in Ferndale. I'm a Ferndale resident, six-twenty-one St. Louis, across from Oppenheimer Park. And I've got several comments I can make briefly, but I think the most important one I would want to make is that in spite of being a supporter of medical marijuana, in fact, I'm a supporter of decriminalization of marijuana, but that's not the issue today, is that there's too much, it's obviously too much confusion amongst the city, I feel, to make a decision today. And so, I think that it's, it would be very wrong for us to like just jump ahead and especially when all the voices that we're hearing are from people that aren't residents of Ferndale. But there are a few points I'd like to try and make if I can make them in a minute. One is that, and I haven't studied the law, I read the law when it passed, but I didn't make it an area of study. I'm not a patient or a provider. But that the, the way I understood it, and I could be wrong, is that the patients are registered to a particular provider and that they give you a list of providers and you choose one and you're hooked together and that that's the person that you get your marijuana from. And that you don't have a open store where people just stroll in and flash their card and buy from whoever. And that that connection is put together by the state. I think that the concept of compassionate service should definitely be honored and the vote of the people of Michigan should be honored in that. But that we shouldn't incite or act out of fear and we shouldn't be pushed into something that we don't understand how it's going to impact our community. I, you know, read interviews in the paper myself, the suggestions that this type of business be relegated to, relegated rather, to industrial zones. And I think that doing that kind of casts negativity on those that are seeking that service and it also increases the opportunity for criminal activity and violations in areas where there are a few inhabitants, especially after businesses close for the day.
Appreciate your com, you're at three minutes. Do you mind moving to the next speaker?
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else? All right. Any final comments from council? Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Robert Redden. I live at seventeen ten Woodworth, Ferndale. I'm a Michigan medical marijuana patient and I have a hard enough time trying to get my medication. And the law's already been almost two years and we're still struggling with this. Medical marijuana helps a lot of people. And I think we need to have it close by so we don't have to drive too far away. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Last comments from council members then.
I just want to make clear that I'm very supportive of establishing a good policy for the businesses who want to set up here on medical marijuana. I signed both petitions and I voted for the law in 2008, so I'm very open to this. But my role here on council is to set policy and make sure that we get it right. And so, that's what I intend to do, even though I do favor having these businesses set up in our community. So, that is my position statement as for now.
Appreciate that. Anyone else? Kate?
I appreciate the comments about our zoning ordinance being a robust zoning ordinance. It was just revised and I always appreciate when people read it. I always think I'm the only person who actually likes zoning, but-
I read it.
Melanie. But I would be, and I do, I respect your comments and that you've, you know, worked with other cities that have different or less regulation in terms of zoning. I would be much more comfortable if we got the same type of opinion or if your words were echoed by our CDS director, you know, after a thorough review. And the Planning Commission, in my recollection, was leaning in that direction. But I just, I want to make sure that our CDS director shares that opinion, you know, and perhaps Captain Collins, you and I can take a field trip to Oak Park and Ypsilanti and talk with officials and businesses and police departments there. I would be, I would be happy to do that. I think it would help put all of our minds a little bit more at ease as we move forward because we're moving forward with something. We don't yet know what. But hearing all sides of this issue from a few of our neighbors, I think would be, would be very helpful. You and me, Captain. Road trip.
Save a seat for me.
Okay.
Okay, everyone going on a road trip to Oak Park. That shouldn't take too long.
And Ypsilanti. And Ypsilanti.
All right. I'm just going to share again, I appreciate everyone's input and, you know, you win some and you lose some. I would not be honest if I didn't say I was disappointed because it has been two years and I have brought this subject up again and again and again. And I've talked to all of the council members and I've talked to the Philks and the Planning Commission and I've talked to the staff going back well over a year and had never gotten any interest in crafting legislation. And all of the feedback I was getting was that Ferndale wanted to again be progressive and on the cutting edge and open-minded. So, I understand and it's fine, but I guess I am disappointed that we're going to put this off for a quarter of a year so that our staff can develop some more legal jargon and some more bureaucratic rules. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
And Mayor Covey.
No, it passes, however. Thank you kindly. Madam Clerk, next item.
That brings us to regular agenda item B, consideration of an ordinance to place the Division of Safety and the Division of Law and Records under the supervision, direction, and control of the city manager.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, I'm going to ask that you introduce this item, please.
Thanks, Your Honor. Chapter three of the Ferndale City Charter distributes the functions and powers of the city among several divisions and departments and lays out the basic framework for the city government. It has been modified from time to time over the years to make adjustments for new realities. Some departments have been eliminated as those functions were taken over by other authorities. But one thing that has persisted over the years is that it makes this Ferndale City Council responsible for supervising the city manager and four department heads appointed by the council. Now, that's different than most governing bodies operating under the council manager form of government here in the state of Michigan and across the country. Under the best circumstances, it means that the council has to spend more time on supervision and performance evaluations and that sort of thing. Under the worst circumstances or more trying circumstances like we have today, it makes it very difficult for the city manager who's responsible to the city council for managing the city's finances to do so without supervision of the two largest departments of the city government. And I think the council will recall some examples during this last year's budget process where that was the case. We also deal with other thorny, sticky issues from time to time, such as the one that you just got done discussing, medical marijuana, that is an issue that requires input from several different departments and it can put the council in a tough situation of not having a, a single quarterback for the team, so to speak, but having to sort out and supervise a variety of city employees rather than, than having one manager. The National Civic League's model city charter, which dates back to 1915, has always been centered around the fundamental principle that all the city's power vested in selected officials and that the administrative functions are managed by a chief administrative officer who is both appointed by, accountable to, and removable by the elected officials. And so, the city attorney has prepared a ordinance which would bring that fundamental principle to the Ferndale city government.
Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Brunner. Request for information from council members?
Yes, I have a few questions. Through the Chair, I do remember February twenty-fifth, a communication, I believe it was from Mr. Chris regarding this matter. So, it's not new, but it's sudden. You instructed Mr. Chris to write this ordinance, correct?
Correct.
And put it on the agenda. Why not bring it to the ordinance committee, which consists of me, Councilman Galloway, and Mr. Chris?
I had input from other council members that they were interested in bringing this forward, so I didn't think it was necessary to go to the ordinance committee, but-
Well, I mean, nobody on the Planning Commission asked me for my input because I'm not on the Planning Commission. I'm on the ordinance committee. This isn't an ordinance. It should have been brought to us. And I feel that this is a major change to our former government. In 1998, the people said no to this. I think it should again be brought, at the very least, to the ordinance committee and if not, to the people for a vote. This is a major change. You need four votes for this. I have a feeling you probably are going to get them. I don't know. But I'm not in favor of this. This is, seems like a power grab to me and I'm not happy with this and I think, this stinks.
I'm sorry you feel that way. I brought this forward at the request of several of your colleagues. This is not of my initiative or a power grab on my part. In the short term, this is going to make my job more difficult, not easier.
Well, that's what they have us up here for, to supervise these five appointees. I have no problem doing that. I don't like this at all. That's my opinion.
Any other comments from the table?
Yeah, Mike, I hear what you're saying and I understand your concerns, but I am of a different of opinion. And it really, my opinion has formed over the years working with local government in southeast Michigan with thirty-one communities, in particular, the city manager form of government. And what I've concluded is, is that it's really have, hard to get accountability with five part-time bosses. It's almost impossible. And with the supervisory issues that we have seen on council, the day-to-day operations of city divisions should be managed by people who are there every day and we are not. And I think that's where some of our challenges has come about. I also look at, at this as a part of streamlining government. Because we have this supervisory challenge, we are spending extra time and money dealing with some issues that would be addressed immediately in most every community in the state of Michigan because their department heads all report to the city manager. And so, I see this about streamlining our government and at a time where we cannot afford to expend dollars on, on issues that we ultimately have control over, but we haven't been managing as well as we could. And it's really about using our taxpayers more wisely, our taxpayer dollars more wisely. That's what the end of the day is for me in terms of redirecting supervisory responsibilities over to the city manager. So, I feel like in these hard fiscal times that we're dealing with, the status quo is dealing nothing in addressing these issues that everybody, since I've been on council, has told me from the, from the residents, from the city department heads, from outside communities. I mean, I've had other people laugh at us, laugh at the city of Ferndale because we don't have an organizational structure that operates well. I mean, I'm embarrassed sometimes. And so, these are the issues that I think we're trying to address here. So, that is my point of view and my reasons why I think this is something that we need to do.
I completely share Melanie's point of view and the, the format for professional city management does not defer HR oversight essentially for some of the top appointed officials in the city to five people who don't know what's going on on a day-to-day basis. I just, I have not seen it be effective. And as Melanie said, and not that I'm, not that I think we need to do things just like everyone else, but when we talk with our colleagues and they either scoff or are astounded at the fact that we've not updated our charter since 1928 to bring us more into line with the way that modern cities are managed and the way that business is done effectively. It's, it's something I've wanted to address for a long time and there are many reasons it didn't pass in ninety-eight. This is something, though, that we as a council can deal with. This is, in my, in my view, an HR issue, an administrative issue. It's not going to have any negative repercussions on the way that service is delivered in our city. What it's going to have is a positive impact on the way that we get our information as council members. And you can have the gavel back, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Apologize for taking a break. Any other discussion from the table?
The only thing I'd like to add is that Mr. Brunner indicated that, he drafted this set to suggest to several of my colleagues, seems like everybody knew this was coming but me. I read this Friday morning when they delivered my agenda.
I read it Friday morning when they delivered my agenda.
Apparently, people at this table knew this was happening and I didn't.
Mike, these were discussed in our closed labor negotiations.
And I have a letter, too, from the twenty-fifth, but nobody said anything. Never mind.
I understand. It's cool. My remembrance is this goes back to the spring and late winter and it was something that we wanted to explore. We do need a motion, however, in order to continue discussion if there's no more requests for information.
I would move to adopt, I'm sorry, I need the ordinance number?
I think we're at ten ninety-three.
Ten ninety-four, maybe?
Does someone have the ordinance number? I would move to adopt ordinance number ten ninety-four to amend Article Ten Administrative Divisions and Departments to Chapter Two Administration to add Section two dash one seven zero to the Code of Ordinances.
Support. Motion made in second, it's Baker-Galloway. And this is in full compliance with the charter, correct? It's in full compliance with the charter, which gives us the option to delegate authority to our city manager?
It is, Your Honor. It does require a vote of four council members, more than the typical majority vote.
Okay. Any discussion?
Well, the only discussion I would have is that this has been discussed in several meetings and memo was prepared earlier in the year and I think everybody was aware that this, or should have been aware, this was coming down the road.
Any discussion from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Kate Watson, I'm sorry you people always manage to bring out my bad side. This is repetitive of two thousand when we defeated this very charter that you're now trying to bring in in piecemeal. First of all, I'm also embarrassed that Councilman Kate and Ms. Piana feel embarrassed by our city not changing. Changes aren't always good. Our city's worked and this charter has served this community well. When you mention about not being here all the time, if you do what you say, you don't need to be here at all because all you're going to do, you're going to second what he does if you put him in total control. Now, when council does stuff we don't like, we can recall you. If you put him in charge of everything, we're stuck with it. That will be after the fight.
Good evening. Joe Squares, eleven seventeen, Amwell. Councilwoman, I apologize that you were embarrassed by part of the political process that's been in this city since it was instituted. I apologize that you were embarrassed. If you're going to ramrod this through this evening, it's an injustice to the taxpayers. Minimally, you should have a public hearing with just this item on it, number one. Or number two, take it to the voters. This is June. November, there's an election. Take it to the voters and let them decide. This is not for you to decide. The voters have already spoken on this once. Now, suddenly, it's going to get ramrotted through? You need to have minimally, as I said before, a public hearing with just this on the agenda. It's an injustice if you pass- It's an injustice if you pass this this evening. It really is.
Patricia Sissel, 1079, Withington, Ferndale. I disagree with Mr. Swears and what he's talked about. The council is elected by the citizens to represent us, and to have just a few people sitting at the diocese up there tonight decide without the voters, again, like you say, having a public hearing or other input or an election, is improper. You have public hearings for minor issues. This is a very serious issue in the city of Ferndale, and it may be the proper way to go, but this is the improper way to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Sissel.
Evening again, mayor and council. I gotta wear two hats here, okay, because one of them is as a fire union, and I gotta be concerned from a safety standpoint for my, for my members. So, I'll start there first. As been said already, this charter's been in place for over 80 years, and it's worked, and it's proven that it's worked. And if you drive down Eight Mile either way, and you come back to Ferndale and turn back into Ferndale north of Eight Mile, you'll see it's worked. There's checks and balances with our charter, and there's a reason for it. It allows each department head and the public safety divisions to fight for their department, fight for the passion of making sure that they instill public safety, is what they were sworn in to do. And all it does is it ensures that there's a voice, and there's no yes man. And everybody, you guys all still have the power to say yes or no, and you still have the power to have a, any type of a question-and-answer period with either department head. Every year, you guys have department head, you'll have to forgive me here, a, an overview of how they've done. Every year, you can do what you want to do, and you have the checks and balances also. The system works. This town has been set up by the founding fathers to be a democracy, not a kingdom. And you guys really need to look at that, because it's worked. And I'm telling you, you're not making a good decision here. From a safety standpoint, I just need to know what training and knowledge and experience base do you have, Mr. Brunner, to feel that you could oversee either public safety department?
Just as much or more training, knowledge, and experience than every other city manager in the state of Michigan, but rest assured that if this ordinance passes, I'm not gonna go down to the fire department and start barking orders. The chief of the fire department is still gonna be in charge of the fire department. This change is about how these five elected officials, the chief administrative officer, and department heads work together. The public isn't gonna notice any changes in how services are delivered, and employees aren't gonna notice any changes in how you deliver those services. So frankly, I wish I was being anointed king here tonight in the way that you have described, but I wanna be...
Those are also words that you've described in the past in jokes.
I wanna be the one here tonight to remind everyone that this council can terminate the city manager's employment at any time. So, while you get to elect these people every two to four years, and yeah, you could recall them through a petition initiative, they can fire the city manager at any time. So, the city manager is arguably the most accountable person in the, in the city government.
Exactly, but it's also a system set up for plausible deniability. And it does not hold, it does not hold the mayor and council accountable.
Right, right.
And it also can hold you accountable, and it can hold the department heads accountable. And it's your jobs to make those hard decisions. You're the, it's your jobs to promote, it's your jobs to decide if somebody's doing their job right or not. That's all your...
And that's not gonna change, Mr. Shan. The council will remain the...
The language in the ordinance proposal is the word "may." What does "may" mean? What, like, how do we decide what may be the reason why this happens? Is it because things aren't being done by the department heads that are fighting for their departments, so therefore, we may change the way we do things to end around how we do it? I mean, I don't understand why we're making this change. Our department heads have done nothing but fight for the professionalism and the safety and the level of service for the community, for the citizens, which is what they turned down. They did not want to change. And this is just an end-around to that, and it's a dangerous move. We're out there every night. We're out there seven days a week, every night, and everybody makes comments at times that things aren't any different on the other side of Eight Mile. Well, I disagree with you. They're having a hard time down there. They're talking about cutting more jobs, more police and fire jobs. Do you think things are gonna get better down there? It's a real situation. And that brings me to my next point, is that you guys make comments, say, you know, it's too much work for you to do. Well, any one of you can resign. Any one of you can resign at any time. If it's too much for you, you can resign. You know, it's, I can't believe that you're in a position where you're willing to minimize your job description of the great power that you have, what you were elected for. You were elected to ensure that there's a clean, protected, safe city. That's your jobs, and it's our jobs to do that also, and we do our best. And this is dangerous, because the thing is, is that there has been nothing done in this town but a fight to maintain a level of public safety. That's all that's been done, and I'm proud of that. That's why I got the job here. I've got 19 years here, and it's, it's just not a good move. And the reason why I'm also saying this is, as you all know, I've recently been engaged, December 23rd, at 8:31 PM last year, and you've all congratulated me at one time or another. Well, the gal that I've been lucky enough to get her hand lives in Ferndale. She lives two blocks on the other side of Eight Mile, and I gotta make a decision along with her as far as where we're gonna live. Well, this greatly impacts the way I want to decide on whether or not I want to live here. If this is the type of government, the type of moves we're gonna make, it scares the hell out of me. There's no transparency here.
Appreciate it, Mr. Shanahan. You're, if you don't mind, way over the three minutes.
That's fine. And the only last thing I would say is that it is not my job to represent the citizens of this community. That's your jobs, that's why you were elected. But I will say that I've been paid to protect them, and that's what I feel I'm doing right now. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Brunner, we've heard words like "dangerous" again. Does the police chief and the fire chief in Madison Heights, is he independent and report to the council, or do they report to the city manager?
City manager.
What about the police chief and the fire chief in Royal Oak?
City manager.
What about Sterling Heights?
City manager.
Hazel Park?
Are there any cities around here where, where the police chief and the fire chief and the other department appointees report directly to council, or do almost all of the cities have a system where they report through the city manager first?
None that I'm aware of where the supervision, direction, control of the department is under the council. There are other places I'm aware of where folks in those positions are appointed by the council, but the day-to-day operations of the city is managed by the city manager.
Through the chair, to the city manager and to the city attorney, several folks have talked about the need to preserve our original charter from 1927. Does this act that is on the table right now do anything to change the charter? Does it amend the charter, eliminate a provision of the charter?
No. I mean, if you actually...
This is, we're taking action under the charter that was ratified, in a sense, by the voters in 1998, is that correct?
Absolutely. If you actually read the charter, it's all there in black and white, that the council has the authority to make these kind of changes, and the, I mean, the city attorney has said so before.
So, one interpretation of the vote of 1998 would be that voters wanted the city council to maintain the power to, you know, direct the city manager to have this managerial oversight. That's the way I read it.
Through the chair, city manager, if and if we can change this down the road, too, right? We can, if in the event that we decide that this isn't working the way that we intended, that we can vote back and direct supervisory back to council?
Yes.
The charter states that we have the power to do that.
Yeah, you can reconfigure the divisions and departments by ordinance says allowed for, under the Charter, Provision 3, Section 13.
Go ahead, councilman.
One last comment, and we're gonna vote, and whatever the outcome of that vote is, I'll deal with it, I'll deal with it. There's been a lot of votes up this table in my last six, seven years. It's on my way. There you go. However, we're gonna vote here in a few minutes. We're changing our form of government. We've had maybe 15 minutes on this. I think it was last year we discussed whether or not the flower shop, the Marshall and Livers could sell flowers on a right-of-way on Mother's Day, and I think that took 50 minutes, and we're changing our form of government in 20 minutes.
Councilwoman, I really disagree with that characterization. We've had memos, we've had materials to read...
I know, but we're trying to discuss this. We've got input from the residents. You can disagree all you want.
And I do disagree. I mean, to say that we've not had time to study this...
But I just say that it was fact.
Your characterization is that we've not studied this thoroughly.
Yeah, well, I didn't characterize it as being embarrassed by the city of Ferndale. I've been here all my life, I'm not embarrassed.
I think I need to clarify my comments. I'm embarrassed by the comments people said, not embarrassed by representing Ferndale. I'm proud to represent Ferndale. So, I'm just trying to make sure that we are using the taxpayer's dollars wisely, and that we're making efficiencies where possible in a financial times in which government, it's local government, is changing, and we need to adapt to the situation that we're facing. And this is another step of many, 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 that we have taken in the last six months.
All right, yes, ma'am, one more comment.
Okay. If you're, like they said, if you're gonna do this through the charter, it should be go before the people. We've thought this before. Now, I'm sure you remember when Bob Porter was mayor, and I think it was '03 that we had the power outage. In fact, I think Dream Cruise was going, not Dream Cruise, where he had a big carnival or something going on with rides. Bob Porter came over, he said, you know, I rushed right over so I could tell the police net what to do. They had it all under control. I said, they know their job. They still know their job. Now, while they're under council, we do, the people have some pull or power with the council people we have. When you put them under, under the city manager, we have no control. While he has to have you consent, that shouldn't be a problem. We already got our three rubber-stamped council up here now. Okay, Joe Swears came up here with the question, Mr. Brunner conveniently disappeared. Where would he be in a crisis? We do not want to lose our power of the people in this community to have some say, and when you do it, this is what you're showing. Now, and as far as the political speeches about how this is gonna help us with our economics, get real, that's political talk. You've got an agenda, we know what it is, and we don't need more concentration of power. We've got referendum before, so...
Thank you, appreciate that, Kate. Kate, I apologize. And yeah, of course, I remember Mayor Porter, everybody loves Mayor Porter, but the police chief, and God bless him, didn't need Bob Porter to run over and make sure things were all right, but the mayor was a great guy, and he wanted to make sure. But you don't want to depend on the mayor either for your public safety. The police chief is the expert, the fire chief is the expert, and that won't change. The reason I'm going to vote the way I do goes to a very, very specific time that was last fall, when there was some major controversy going on with headlines that were very embarrassing, and it had to do with press releases that were going out from the police department. And I sat right at this table and said, what would it take for the mayor to get copies of press releases in real time? And the answer was, three votes. And so, that's why I'm going to vote yes for this, because you don't always have unanimity up here at the council table, and it's very difficult for five of us who are part-time to try to manage five different department heads. Good government goes through a city manager who's a central person that can then communicate. Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmembers, Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
No.
Mayor Cuffey?
Yes, it passes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Regular agenda item...
All right.
Sorry, regular agenda item, see consideration of amendment to the Ferndale Pleasant Ridge Fire Protection Agreement.
Mr. Brunner, are you gonna introduce this?
Yes, thanks, Your Honor. Every spring, the Ferndale and Pleasant Ridge Fire Protection Committees get together to talk about the annual fee that Pleasant Ridge pays to Ferndale for fire protection services. The first meeting was held back in March this year. At that time, Pleasant Ridge asked for a reduction in the annual fee that they'll pay to Ferndale over the course of the next three years. In the time since then, we've gone back and forth, both myself and the city attorney meeting with officials from Pleasant Ridge, and have negotiated an agreement that does indeed reduce the annual fee that Pleasant Ridge will pay to Ferndale. But it also basically extends the agreement for a third year. The way that the agreement is structured now is that either party may terminate on two years' notice, and this amendment would ensure that the agreement stays intact through the fiscal year that will end June 30th, 2013.
Very good. So, while we are gonna be able to unfortunately take less income, it's gonna keep us with an agreement for an extra year.
Correct. It'll keep that agreement intact, as the council may know, and it's been reported in some of the papers. Pleasant Ridge has been talking with some of its other neighboring communities about going public safety or alternative ways to receive the service at a lower cost. This will give the city of Ferndale an additional period of time to keep this relationship intact and see how we can keep it going indefinitely. I would mention that the way the fee is currently structured is that what the city of Pleasant Ridge pays next year is based on what the city of Ferndale's actual costs were last year. So, basically, we're kind, the fact that the city of Ferndale is cutting back on its fire expenditures, we're kind of accelerating the discount to Pleasant Ridge. They won't have to wait two years for those decreased expenditures to work through the formula.
Will we be able to deal with this budget, slight budget hit?
Yeah, budgetarily, we, this was already under discussion at the time the council adopted the budget in May, so we've already budgeted for a reduced payment from both Pleasant Ridge and Royal Oak Township next year. The council approves this tonight, I anticipate. We'll have similar discussions with Royal Oak Township.
Is there any request for further information or a motion?
I would move that we approve the proposed amendment to the Ferndale Pleasant Ridge Fire Protection Agreement as detailed in the memo attached to this agenda.
I'll second it. Motion made, seconded, Galloway, Lennon, discussion?
Councilmembers, Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Cuffey?
Yes, that passes unanimously. We're back to some consent items, Madam Clerk.
Yes, we are. First item is, I don't know, I have to find my notes.
H, M?
M.
Which one, councilman?
H.
H?
The proposed fee schedule for fiscal year ending 2011, Your Honor?
Yes. It's self-explanatory in that it lists all the fees and what we charge for various things. It came about through the budget process, but obviously, some questions. Who wanted to ask further?
I wanted to ask questions about the parking, the auto parking fund changes to the parking fees, and I think my understanding of the situation, there was some miscommunications that happened, and so, I just wanted to make sure that the DDA had an opportunity to make a statement about the proposed fees in the schedule and talk about that. Could you come up, Christina?
Christina Shepherd Desius, Ferndale DDA Executive Director. I did get the council agenda on Friday and saw that the parking passes and now meter parking enforced hours of operation would be modified through the approval of this fee schedule. And at our last public meetings and public forums that we've hosted, as well as mult... And at our last public meetings and public forums that we've hosted, as well as multiple meetings with council members, with the council regarding parking, it was always the intent to be able to go back to the businesses and let them know what a final, not a decision, but a recommendation would be to council before it actually came to council. We did not know that this item was going to be on the agenda specifically. The parking pass rates that are listed are what was included in the second recommendation that we came to council on, so we're not negating that. It's really about the process of communication and making sure we're being forthright in communicating to our businesses that these changes are coming down the pipe. Although, there is additional item in terms of enforcement from ten a.m. until two a.m., which is a significant change in enforcement, which we are recommending that through a, through different types of meter installations, but right now, the way that you would in, you're currently enforcing, I don't think you have the manpower to actually enforce during that period of time. So, those would be things that I think that you would need to look at when you have that capability of doing that, or if there is a plan in place, which I'm not aware of, to hire an additional part-time enforcement officer. It was one item that we did recommend through this process. A couple other items regarding the parking passes, though, through our public forums, it was brought out that there needed to be a consideration for possibly a reduced daytime pass cost. That was actually brought up by Foley Mansfield. There was also discussion from residents who live in the DDA area for a residential DDA parking pass, or to help to ensure that they would be able to have parking spots when they got home at night to get to their homes, as well as for actually unloading and loading their cars up either from grocery shopping or from a long weekend, and how that was going to be addressed. And I think thirdly was really just in point, in point in terms of the communication and getting back to them. And the fourth item was really with these parking passes in the non-premium and premium locations, I believe from our recollection from all the meetings, is that there would be modifications to where that map is, or what that map consists of, where are those locations? And none of this is here with these fee changes. And I don't think that, I think we need to have more time to discuss those items and have that in conjunction with this specific item.
Through the chair, I would agree. I don't think that we have any of the mechanisms in place, that I know of at least, to enforce this. This would essentially be a fee that we would be charging without any plan behind it. Perhaps we can come to some sort of compromise about how long we would like it to take to put that plan in place. I'd rather it be sooner rather than later, but right now, we're just increasing people's fees without any direction as to where they should park, or why we're changing it, or who gets the money, or whether enforcement will increase.
And not to be too flip, although it's gonna sound that way, I mean, during the budget proposals, one of your proposals, or perhaps the city manager's proposal, was to take over this whole system as of July one. Presumably, if you weren't satisfied with this schedule of auto parking fees, you had your own developed, it was more in compliance, do you have it all written down with the extension of the, you know, premium lots and discounts and such? I mean, is that all written down, sitting in the DDA's office? Had you been tasked with this?
Well, actually, we have looked at an extended duration. It was actually on the, really, the request of council members and the city manager that we take a longer period of time in the planning of that potential management changeover. And at that point, we have taken a bit of a break back to kind of look at some of those things, and we are working on a full layout and schedule and plan that we could be able to present to you. We're not saying at this point we wouldn't, that we disagree with all these items, it's just that I think in terms of the process and making sure that we are really upholding our word of what we've told business owners, that we go back to them and tell them what are these modifications, because it was not clear to us that these pass rates were really something that the council members were going to support or not. So, that's a change of direction. So, if you want us to work on this component faster, I think that we need to really sit down and talk about what type of involvement is the DDA having in the management of the system. You keep asking us for more and more information, we continue to provide and provide, and we are not getting much further along. It is a constant drain on our staff to continue going in this direction if we don't see an insight to this. So I do really encourage that we get some more consensus in a formal direction from council, if that is the case.
Okay, so, there's no plan in the DDA office for what you'd like to see, specifically to this?
As I stated when we submitted this originally, this was submitted as part of our recommendation. However, as part of the public forum, some of the items that came out have not been addressed yet.
Okay, so this is what you proposed?
So unless the city actually wants to address those issues and handle those on their own, then I would say, then you go forward and try to move forward on these items at a later point when you can inform the businesses. We were never told to say, hey, you need to do a shout-out to your businesses to let them know this is going to be on the agenda. That's really what our issue is right now.
Okay, so this is, this is the proposal that you brought forth during the budget session. Some issues came up during the budget session, I certainly remember that, of perhaps tinkering with this. We passed the fee schedule changes every year at this time, and you'd like to not implement any of this until, until what?
I think we have to answer those few questions at a minimum, in terms of, are we going to consider a reduced daytime pass cost? Is it even feasible to do that? Coming up with the final map as to where these premium and standard parking lots are going to be, and how is that going to actually be internally managed and processed? Because there would need to be signage placed throughout in parking lots as well. And we're going to need to make sure that whatever type of pass is in place to hand out to someone is actually producible. Those are all things that in literally two weeks, you cannot get done.
If I can jump into, this all makes sense, because we have a lot of fees from all the different departments, but those are the fees that did generate a lot of controversy, and some of them are more than doubling. I have a process question to the city manager. You have weekly staff meetings, or every other week, staff meetings?
We meet on the Tuesday following council meetings.
So every two weeks, you have a staff meeting?
Twice a month.
Does the DDA attend the staff meetings?
Not generally.
No? All right. Because I think, I think there does need to be some, some better communication, and I'm not blaming anyone, but it's a pretty, pretty intense increase, and I'm hoping that the motion that gets made might be that we adopt all of these fee changes, with the exception of the, you know, the small section here on, well, the part that deals with auto parking fees, and that we put perhaps a specific time, a couple weeks moratorium, and we'll come back and look at these numbers. And I understand Christine's point is that we're looking eventually at perhaps the consideration of a whole new system of parking. And so rather than make these large increases now and freak out some people, think about if you were the one that had to buy the annual pass and it went from two forty to five forty. So, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, or were you gonna say something?
Well, no, I was gonna point out that attendance at the staff meeting probably wouldn't have...
Helped out?
I don't know. This isn't something we discuss in detail at a staff meeting. Ms. Hubanks prepares the fee schedules, she's not here tonight, so she can't tell you the process through which she went to solicit input.
I understand. I would have probably noticed, if I were the city manager, I probably would have said, oh, there's those really high fees coming in for new parking fees, and it might have... I'm not blaming you, though, you have a lot on your plate, but you might have said, oh, better call Christina. Hi.
Hi, can I make a statement?
President of the DDA.
Yeah, Veronica Lujic, Chairperson of the Downtown Development Party.
Yeah.
Owner of State of the Art, frightening. There's something I would like to bring up, that's kind, it's woven in between of a lot of things that we've all done together, which is communication, and it seems to be an issue that we all have. And I think, from my perspective, and I could be totally wrong, but it seems to me that council expects a high level of service from the DDA. You expect a lot from us, even from our volunteers. There's only three staff, so you gotta understand that a lot of things that are done, are done through volunteers in regards to communication. And I think that what is happening here is that you are not communicating with us. So you expect a certain standard from us, but then you do not do that in return. And I think that when we came before you before and said, hey, here are some parking things, we'd like to discuss and talk about them, I think Mr. Galloway, Councilman Galloway, said, what have you done to talk to the business owners? So here I am today, asking you, what have you done to talk to the business owners? You didn't even inform the DDA so that we had the opportunity to get it out. And I think there's gotta be a mutual respect happening here, and it's not.
Isn't that what I just said?
Yeah, through the chair. It is, and I just, I really...
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Wow. No, I appreciate that, and we understand, and yeah, there does need to always be more communication, and I think I just said that we probably should have given more heads-up, but I think you're also the one who mentioned once that if we wanna know what's going on with the DDA, we should come to your meetings.
And I'm here today.
And that was a little over the top.
Yes.
Because we go to lots of meetings. Councilwoman?
A suggestion through the chair, because I think that as city government gets smaller and our, I mean, we don't have any redundancies in our departments already, you know, we have two people in the city manager's department that are, in all honesty, doing, you know, three or four people's jobs. So, the, this problem I fear could get worse, and I wonder if things, you know, if simple remedies, like including the DDA director, or perhaps even, you know, think about including some of those other quasi-governmental units around the city in staff meetings, or briefings, or some type of update on a regular basis might improve, make you feel part of the team. If you see someone on a regular basis, you're more likely to think that, oh, I should remember to call Christina, she, I saw her at the staff meeting last week, and something's come up that might impact her, if you, out of sight, out of mind. So I don't want that to happen.
Most all problems are a result of failure to communicate.
As we all get busier, face-to-face communication might help.
Let's, I'm hoping then that there'd be a motion that might address the fee changes, maybe while putting a thirty-day or some amount of time on the parking part. Is there? Is there a motion with regards to this item? What's the pleasure of the council?
I guess I would move that we adopt the fee schedule identified in item seven H, with the exception of the parking fees, which, consideration of which should be tabled until the first regu, last regularly scheduled meeting in July.
Second. Very good. That gives us at least thirty days, and if we need more, we'll postpone it again, but it helps in the right direction. Thanks. Discussion? Did you get all your answers, questions answered? Or some of them?
My questions and issues have to do with the parking management, which is not on the agenda here. I don't wanna elongate our meeting any further with my commentary.
But are you saying?
Yes.
But you're good with putting this part off, since that relates to what you're interested in, right?
Yes.
Anything else, Madam Clerk, then?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item.
Consent agenda item P, which is approval to adopt ordinance ten eighty-nine to amend chapter seven, article eleven, massage therapist licensing.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I had requested that council pull that item from the agenda. This is a proposed ordinance amendment to bring the city's massage therapist and massage establishment ordinance into compliance with the state law. State law, Public Act passed in two thousand and eight preempted cities from regulating the licensing of massage therapists. The proposed ordinance eliminates those references in the body of the ordinance. There is a licensing procedure, though, however, referenced in section seven dash two fifty, indicating that the applicant, and the review of the applications would go to the city manager. And in discussing this matter with the clerk, she suggested that that be amended to the city clerk's, to the city clerk rather than to the city manager. It seems like a reasonable modification.
Seems that way.
And that's simply for consistency's sake. The city clerk's office is charged with processing all other licenses.
Okay. Then, is there any requests for more information? Things clear?
I would move to approve the submitted ordinance amending chapter seven, article eleven, massage establishment licensing regulations with the changes recommended by the city attorney.
Support. Thank you. Motion made and seconded, Kate, and then Scott. Discussion. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Cobby?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Does that conclude the agenda items, Madam Clerk?
It does, Your Honor.
Are there any council liaison reports? If not, and there's some transportation stuff going on, a little...
Contact your legislators, a vote for a regional transit authority is coming up, there's some opposition to it, we need to get that done in order to, you know, get some sort of light rail up in that one.
Is there state, state legislator?
State legislator.
Appreciate that, Scott.
House, Senate?
House and Senate?
I was asking, it's in the Senate, isn't it?
Yeah. The regional transit authority that is in the Senate would allow the southeast Michigan to create authority, which would handle the funding that comes through the federal government and state government to actually put transit on Woodward and elsewhere in our region. It's an organizing entity. If we don't create it, then we have problems using getting that money.
So, the Senate's good, and we need to push the House?
I don't think either is good. You gotta push them both. Both by Brooks and Banks, so.
All right, and there was something on the agenda today, and I think...
Under consent, there was...
All right, get those letters off.
Certainly will.
And Amy Dillon, too. All right. Next item, Madam Clerk, is it called a council?
It is, Your Honor.
Julie Hall, anything else from Recreation?
No, sir.
Anything else from CDS Department?
No, thank you.
Very good. Byron Fotides, Department of Public Works?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Very good. Police Chief Michael Kitchen?
Nothing, sir.
Fire Chief Sullivan?
I have a few things. Do you want me to say nothing? It's kinda late.
Good idea.
How about brief points?
Brief points?
Bullet points?
Pride Fest, a quick review, everything went well, there was like four medicals during the event. The main concern we had was a couple times there was gridlock with traffic going around the outside, which would have made emergency vehicle access almost nonexistent. So we're gonna have to look at circling, traffic, or one-way street kinda ideas and that, so we can get in and get out. Traffic was so thick, the cars would have been a problem, we wouldn't have had nowhere to move them, because of the way the parking was, the cars couldn't have got out of the way.
Gridlock around the...
Gridlock, meaning bumper to bumper to bumper.
People trying to find...
And there was no one on Woodward, and they weren't pulling out on Wellington, and we found out later they were looking for parking right there on Woodward, or they were waiting for a spot, so they had thirty cars behind them. Well, if we came down with an engine, or an ambulance, or police cars, there'd be nowhere for the cars to go, because they're all bumper to bumper waiting to get into parking spots, so that was a problem. We aided Oak Park in a mutual aid at the Coolidge Fire. We had nobody hurt, but they did lose a restaurant and a marketplace, and it was quite an intense fire there for a while. And Ferndale Police also sent a couple cars over to control traffic, because all the public safety people were fighting the fire. So, Coolidge was blocked by smoke and no traffic control. I met with Senator Jacobs and Rep. Donigan and Switkowski with the area fire chiefs today, talking more about regionalizing and opening up for regionalized dispatch, et cetera, and where's they're gonna fund it by, hosted by Chief Healy at the Southfield Public Library. We had a house fire on Coy Street due to wires down, which brings to the point when wires are down in the neighborhood to the citizens, that electricity can do some strange things. The wire was down on the side of the house, went into the... The wire was down on the side of the house, went into the ground, up the grounding wire, into the cable box, jumped into the cable, went through the cable TV lines, into the house where it arc-welded itself to their heating cooling vents, went down the heating cooling vent to the, or the exhaust vent to the dryer, set the rugs and...
Yeah, lost...
The dryer on fire, and the house was on fire in the vents. The guys were already sitting on the wire, the lady said, "Am I smoke detectors going off?" And they went in there, and the basement was on fire. So, electricity entered from a grounding rod, up the grounding rod, up the wire, into the cable box, which is grounded for safety.
Well, don't tell us again, we got it. Wow.
Just wanna make it sure everyone knows, when wires are down, nothing is safe, including hardwired phones. You pick up a phone, you can be electrocuted. Use your portable phones.
Hey, Kevin Sullivan's the one who reminded me that water and electricity...
They don't mix.
Don't mix.
You needed to remind us that.
And when there was a fire on my street, that was why they weren't spraying it, when my neighbors...
Yeah, everyone wanted to know why we weren't putting it out. 50,000 volts is a good reason not to put it out. Uh, Fire Marshal Banton wanted me to tell you, there's two out of the three child arsonists we had are in the court system, and we're working hard with the sheriff's department to protect these children and prevent them from hurting themselves or others, uh, cause the fires they started were very substantial. Last, I sent a sergeant down in an emergency response request, as you all saw on the news. Dundee was hit very hard, they lost all communications. Oakland County sent down their emergency management team, and our sergeant's part of the communications network, so he was called in for what we call second operational period, they divide into twelves, and he was on the next crew in, so he spent 12 hours down there assisting operational communications for the people in Dundee. And that is the wrap-up, but I do have a question about emergency response for council. How many of you all have been trained if we should have the tornado come through Ferndale and not Dundee? Just a thought. So, we need to work on some things.
And besides, go to the basement?
Yeah, the emergency management, as we're talking about communications between other departments, how are we all gonna blend in here when things are...
This came up at one point when Barwin was sitting at the end of the table, and we never really followed up on it, but...
Chief Legault was the fire chief.
Well, I attended one of the most difficult classes at the FEMA National Fire Academy, and one of the things, when you do a FEMA recovery for 75% or 100%, is paperwork between politicians and the operational personnel. You don't fill out cross-the-t's, dot-the-i's, you get no recovery. So, we all need to work on the future of that, so if something should happen here, we'll be lining ourselves up for full recovery.
But you're also talking about setting up, uh...
Communication.
Response system command center plans for...
Right. We know what to do on our end, but do we have a communication center? Where are we gonna have it? I have some suggestions, and that, but just so it's in your head.
There is a plan, but it sounds like no one knows where it is, but I think there is.
It's a secret.
Well, why don't you talk to the chiefs? Uh, we got, we're gonna have a new police chief, and a new, we got a new fire chief. You gotta figure that out, Mr. B.
Yeah, no, I think, uh, we, the city has an emergency management plan. I think Chief Schmidt was the one who put it together.
I think we need to operate it.
Yeah.
When, when Mayor Porter was mayor, he'd just run over to the police department and hang out. I, I don't usually do that, but...
We'll handle it.
Thank you, Chief.
Any questions?
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
You wanna hear that, where the fire arc went again? No, no. Just kidding. Anyone else back there that I missed? Sherilyn?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Bob, anything else?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Dan?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Um, no one?
I'm skipping.
Nada?
Just real briefly, um, last Friday, there was a groundbreaking over on McDowell by the Community Housing Network. Ferndale's long been a champion and supporter of affordable housing. Uh, Community Housing Network provides housing for the homeless, the disabled, low income, and those facing a housing crisis. Uh, we are their first actual construction project, and, uh, they decided to locate it here. Big groundbreaking with a lot of folks in attendance. Uh, you can learn more about, uh, Community Housing Network at communityhousingnetwork.org.
Thank you for going to that, I'm glad you were able to go to the groundbreaking.
Yeah, a lot of folks there, it was good.
Able to make that.
Uh, just real quick, um, we're having this through the chair to the marshal left. To Mr. Bruner, um, same problem with the railroad as, uh, last year.
Right-of-way maintenance?
Yeah, they're not taking care of all their property, uh, from eight mile all the way down. Can you repeat the business? Okay, thanks.
Railroad crossing.
And there's a, yeah, and there's, nine mile looks great, there's one patch of grass, if you, right by Colts and nine Hilton, that the railroad won't cut, and Colts refuses to do it, and it's about five feet high. Yeah, you'll see it, this east nine mile, just 10 feet east of the track, it's about five foot 10 thing, it's about four or five feet high. But same problem over on east side, the grass is four or five feet high, too. So, same old problem with the railroad, that's it, that's all I have.
Very good. Mayor Procham?
Uh, one of the things that the fire chief just reported on was the, um, fire in Oak Park, which I learned about, um, while at the MACHNA conference, um, with Councilwoman Piana, and, um, did, you know, make a, a call to the, to the fire chief just to make sure everyone was okay, but have no fear, I will never run over to make sure that everyone's okay. It's, in my opinion, best to stay out of your way and let you do your job. So, um, while we were there at MACHNA, um, we also spoke with, um, Senator Jacobs, we had a great conversation, I think, um, about Ferndale's willingness to, um, to, to move forward. Ferndale's ready, Ferndale wants a plan. I know that the city manager and city attorney, I'm eagerly awaiting, um, your recommendations on millages and authorities and how we move forward with some of that language, but what, um, Councilwoman Piana, um, really initiated with, um, Senator Jacobs was a conversation about Ferndale possibly being willing, you know, to sort of take, take the lead in this. We've got nine communities that have been talking for years, sometimes only seven, sometimes nine. Um, and if we can't all, if we can't get all seven on the same page, maybe we can get two or three of us, and we, and we take the step, and we can work other people in. Um, that was sort of a, a new conversation with Senator, with Senator Jacobs, but I think that it's something that Ferndale's ready to take the lead in, is, you know, let's not wait until, you know, all seven people can agree on something for two years, let's, let's move forward. So, looking forward, um, to the continuing conversations on fire authorities. And also, I was exchanging some glances with, um, our CDS director as, um, our friends from the, friends of the Ferndale Library were making announcements about the library opening, and I just want to, to caution people, and I keep seeing this over and over, I see people sometimes putting the horse before the cart, and you don't do it intentionally, you do it because you're excited about something, you're excited about the new library opening, you have a timeline in your head, but you do not have a certificate of occupancy, or you do not have an event permit, or there's, you know, all of the ducks are not yet in a row, and I fear that people may be setting themselves up for disappointment, or for anger and frustration with the city council and city departments who are trying to carry out their jobs of doing, you know, public safety inspections. So, again, just a caution, no blame, people are excited, I'm excited, I'm glad the library's reopening. There are other instances of this, too, this is not finger pointing at the library, but a, as we as community members are putting together events, just don't put the horse before the cart, make sure that you've got things in order to avoid disappointment. That's all.
Are you saying they don't want one of these tacked up to their door?
That's not even a good joke.
I'm sorry. Um, is there anything we can do, though, to facilitate so that there isn't problems or, or disappointment?
I, I think their contractors will be the ones to facilitate it with Marcia, and they're working toward it.
All right.
But I, I give a brief update on that, Your Honor, the, um, the library was inspected, uh, more than a week ago, two Fridays ago. Uh, the ball has been in, in their court, they've, they've been given the inspection report, they know what must be done, and I think it was just, uh, yesterday that the, uh, the library's, uh, construction manager emailed the city, uh, to begin the process of scheduling the re-inspection, so...
Okay. So, everybody knows what everybody needs to do?
I believe so, and I believe they're doing it, um...
All right. Thanks, thanks, Kate.
Yeah, that's what I'm assuming, too.
Real quick, um, the Pride Festival really was successful, I was amazed that you could have that many people for that many hours in that space and, and have as few problems. A shout-out to the police department, the police officers, the fire department for job well done. Um, we estimate 45,000 people throughout the day, and even the rain, which came and went and came and went, didn't drive folks away, it just drove them into the restaurants and the clubs, and then when the sun would come out, people would pour back out, but, uh, I estimate that, that, that event brought in 1.3 million dollars to our downtown economy. A shout-out to Dino's, who held a really neat fundraiser yesterday, it was for the American Leukemia Society. Um, I happened to be in there on another issue, and it was just a really nice event, so congratulations to Dino, uh, Dean Bach, everyone's favorite club owner, who by the way is also rented one of the lofts on nine, which is now full. All of the lofts have people in them on nine, and Mr. Wolfson's ready to, uh, work on his